It's five o'clock, so I'm gonna open the meeting. Good evening, all. Standing room only just about, so, nice to see you. Where do you want to start?
Department heads.
Yep.
Fire.
Chief Kamash. All right, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We're starting from the top. You have a date, 138 incidents, we're running 42% over 2023, same period of time. Pretty significant increase, so we got a couple storms in there, but we did also in 2023 as well, which is, it seems like we're pretty out, you know, and so we'll keep an eye on that and see how things going. So, and the two storms we had in the past three weeks, I was able to, as I told you in the past, if I think that there's gonna be an issue with us getting out, so after hours, people, the toll companies have to come from the airhouse at the station and get out. Well, if they can't get to the station, we can't get out, so if I forecast that a storm could have that effect, we have funding for staff overnight, and we staff both storms. So the first storm, we staffed it the night out, and the second storm, that was a multi-day event with the wind and the heavy wet snow, we staffed the night before and the night out, and we were able to get, we probably had 10, 12 response to each storm, some medicals, some wires down, some trees down, and we were able to get out on all calls, so. Fire prevention, continuing monthly fire drills. This month, I'm doing the inspections in place of assembly renewals at places like the golf course and Kinder Air Works and stuff like that, so they need that to get their license, so that's due in April this year, so I gotta go on. Get those inspections done, and I'm working with Shaker Village to, with their fire alarm vendor, they're looking to select a company to maintain their fire alarm system, so if they're writing all of the documents, I need a review, and so I've been working with them, the board trustees, in order to guide through the process.
Do they have, do you have to worry about anything like sprinkler systems or anything up the chain, or just the alarms?
The alarm slash frequency system, Mark was a frequency system, yeah.
So you mean you're keeping an eye on that pump down the back, or?
Not necessarily. So on the old pump, usually there's an audible at the fire alarm system that tells you, hey, your pump's running, you should go check it out. Well, because the system wasn't maintained before that, from what I understand, that would never tell us, and we never knew the pump was running when we went there, and the pump blew itself out, so almost a million dollars later, they have a, they have an audible that says that one pump is running, so.
Okay, that's good.
So just a reminder, Pancake Breakfast is a Saturday, breakfast is served 7:30 to 9:30. It's our only fundraiser, although it can already warrant the Fire Fighter Association. Actually, we had about 125 people from the community come up to breakfast, so it was great that a lot of people I still haven't met, so it was great to see a lot of people. We're locked and loaded, ready to go for that. This evening, we'll be out in Loudoun, this day in the regional drill, has to do with wildfire, so we're heading out there on 5:30. Thanks for calling me first, it's hard to make it in time. Next weekend, we have five members attending the large animal rescue class, and we had two in the last year, as you know, for calls to our operator horse, and they're both successful, but if somebody can show us a better way or some tactics, that's the intent of this class, so it's all weekend class. So I mean, Sunday, we have five members attending, including myself. I've been turning some screws on the AFG grant that we put in for our holes and appliances to supplement our new engine. I reached out to both Washington and Congressional delegation, Senator Hassan has reached out back, said she'd do what she could to ensure we get that funding. So I'm pretty encouraged by that.
Great.
Working with the organizers that are planning our NASCAR event, it's in June this year. It's the third weekend in June, that's also last weekend of Bike Week. Be a busy week up that way, and then the quarter coming through town, so I'm working, I have an organization meeting tomorrow, but we staff all three days, we take one of our engines and, you know, we give them a price, and we staff the infield on Friday and Saturday for 12 hours each day, and we staff the north gate on Sunday to protect that part of town, and also to, if there's, you know, anything going on past there, because you can't, you can't get through, there's like a four-hour window before the race and after the race, if you can't get through, if you need to, so we post a crew up there.
And we have enough to post a crew there and keep the town covered, too?
Yeah, well, they're paying for it, but, so we sent our second engine up there. That engine would be available, will break free if there's an incident coming in town, so we do, you know, make sure that that happens. The dock-in install kit, I did get that directed from Penn that you directed me to install. I reached out, there's only one available per community, they have a second grant in to get more, so I'm looking for direction from you on which way would you like to install it first now.
I think the library.
You said library, didn't you?
Discuss, yeah.
The library first, okay, so I'm on, I'm on it, she wants the paper ones, I install it, I'll be up probably by the end of the month, and as soon as I get the second one, I'll let you know, and we'll get it in time off.
That's great.
Our utility, which is our second forestry, suffered a catastrophic pump failure, and I want to, my plan is, in the officers meeting we have in two weeks, to, I, I, when permissible, I solicit feedback from the office company, officers in the department, but my plan is maybe to decommission that and use it as a flatbed, because this time of year, we really, this, once our forestry's in service, we have no pickup truck to put hose and equipment in and all that stuff, so I want to discuss that with my officers, and possibly, I'm not sinking a lot of money into that, so we'll probably decommission it.
So it's just the pump part that it doesn't?
It's the pump part, yeah, but it's about $5,000, you know, so, not a heck of a lot of money, but relatively speaking, but we have two forestries, and I think operationally, we can get by with one.
So when you say utility, you mean the forestry vehicle?
It's the second forestry, yeah. So three years ago, it always brought my attention that southern part of town, mainly New Road, that area, there's this water supply issue, there's no access to water. Our closest water, if we ever fired down that end of town, is this pond, basically right up at the sand lake house. That's been a concern of mine, so we identified a stream on Picard near New Road, had contacted the property owner. I did that proposal, it's in order for us, there's a great location to put in a dry hydrant there. I have all the permission from the owner, I have a price on the contractor to do all the, to do all the grading and access. It's about $4,300. Clearly, I don't have that on my budget, I do have a dry hydrant line, where I'm gonna use that money to supply all the pipes and fittings for him, but that person's gonna cut the trees and bring load and boulders, and all that stuff to make a, make an approach with an engine, and then, you know, we supply the pipe in, so it's $4,300, so I just put $5,000 in case there's a little bit of extra unexpected cost, and also, I'm not sure if you want me to detain moving forward with that, but I don't have the money in my budget to do that.
Is that Charlie's mud hole, you wanna stick that in, or going down Picard Road towards the middle on the right side?
Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a pretty deep one, yeah, other than that color, and it runs there even during the dry times, during the summer as well, so. So what do you refer to it as? Oh, did you read it? Yeah, yeah. Why, we haven't even answered tonight, or is something I'd like you to talk about with the board and maybe give you some direction? And the rest area, the last item, the rest area highway access off of 132 has been being used. That gate's been opened and being used by some people, and the property owners, as we've shown, will be not overly happy about that, once they give us access.
Been used, partying and disturbances and?
Just kind of getting onto the highway from that area.
Can you get across there? I thought there was Kirby or something.
No, you get across there, you get across there. So he wants to lock the gate with a notch padlock, and basically would give us access, that if we ever needed to get that either way, and and so with the direction of Ken, I would say, where's that lock, and we're gonna make that happen.
That's good.
That's all I have, any questions?
Thanks.
Just one, and I'll be, you can answer quickly, because I know you need to get out of here. The 42% over 2023, your incidents, you said some were storm, do you have any sense of what the other, why it's so much higher?
They're just all routine calls, medical counter accidents, to, it goes fire in the air on the highway, you know, they're just all routine calls, and this, and this business is no rhyme or reason for, of course, you get a big storm, you know you're gonna be a little bit busy, but the other routine calls, you have to take your medicals and all that stuff, there's really no rhyme or reason for, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay.
Chief, question for you, and please, chief. I asked you guys to contact, consolidate, which one, which one of you guys pulled the weight, but neither one of you guys got it done, so thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, well, that was me.
We were actually tied up at the same place, neither one of us made a question. So just looking to draw these.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hudson, really appreciate it.
Okay.
You know, this afternoon, took care of this all.
Cool. Great, thank you.
Thank you. You have good training?
Yeah, thank you. See you, chief.
What'd you say?
So all I got is, we found you at, you had one already for patrol, it's just waiting on the air card, which should be here any day, according to Ken. Officer Dumas started April 1st, been running around with me, well, actually, he's been reading policies, because I've been doing a lot of stuff with PD, but we did get on air a few times. I know Chief Brack talked about the policies that we were redoing.
Yeah.
So I do have 140 new forms that are all on digital now. Policies 101 through 122 are completed, plus five job descriptions. I was debating on getting those out to the officers now, and so they can get a whole bunch at once, and decided, it's probably a bad idea, because I'm gonna have to figure out which ones they replaced, and so I'm actually gonna hold on to them until I have all of them, and then get them all out at once, and then have them, go through them and sign saying they've reviewed all the policies.
And I know, chief, we talked about yours as well, your job description, right?
We talked about it.
Your redoing, right?
Oh, yeah, so the job descriptions are all done.
Yeah.
And the, like I said, 140 forms, I think we've had 20 something forms before, now we have 140 of them, so. They're all digital, so, no more paper forms, unless we need a paper. We did have my T gun the other day, apparently we have four computers that are past their expiration date. We found out, obviously, we have one that just died, so I am working on, and two of them replaced this year, and we'll work on the rest in the future.
Those are computers that are up at the municipal center, not ones that are out?
No, they're in the police department, yes. They'll replace the patrol ones first, because they're using the most.
Yeah.
They are 10 years old. One, probably a lot more than that. That's all I got.
How's it going up there, all right?
It's good, still trying to get everything transferred over from Mike to me, but that's a process, different things come in different days, trying to figure it out. Figure out what needs to be transferred over.
Yeah, and at least he's available, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
Texted, and your call, yeah.
And it was good today, I was walking past the school, there was a patrol car there when the buses come.
We try and have one there every day at the end of school.
I hadn't seen one recently, but it was really good to see one now, and they just come to, you know, help with traffic.
It's more, at one point, all the parents were lining up and blocking Baptist Road, and they're supposed to be waiting down at the center, so we started getting there, every couple of days, trying to have someone up there to stop them from doing that.
Yeah, I noticed, there was quite a, the last week, there was quite a backup all the way down the hill, when there wasn't an officer there, and today it was clear.
We've been trying to have an officer there when we're available, and when we're there, they're very good, it's like they know.
Yeah.
When the cop's not there, they can, nobody's out there telling them otherwise, the school doesn't.
I know, because I'm walking the dog past, I'm trying to figure out how to get through the cars or nothing, okay.
For some reason, the school doesn't get involved, they just call us, and say, we can't always be there, but when we, when Ken were there.
It worked well today.
And we do have someone coming, because of Ken, to help us with those lights up there, those haven't worked since I've been here.
Yeah.
They're, we've tried, Mike and I spent hours trying to program those things.
Oh, the ones that blink, as they go 20, when 20 miles an hour, one's blinking?
It'll be going on at 8 o'clock at night, we have no idea.
I don't remember, I've never seen it.
No, yeah, since I've been here, I went out there.
Well, like you said, by 8 o'clock at night.
One of the first things I did was up there, try and figure it, figure it out, and I couldn't figure it out, so.
Who installed them to begin with?
I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
We had the, we had the DOT, there was a person at New Hampshire DOT that came and helped us a couple of times, and they retired, and I think they were doing it out of the goodness of their heart, and DOT does not want to help us out now, they're just not, they said, we don't have the personnel, and they're not there lights, and so on and so forth, so I found a guy that has worked on those in the past, and is going to come up and donate some time to the town.
I don't mind doing it, I don't mind programming, if someone can give me the instructions on how to actually do it, but we couldn't figure it out, and it's been a long time. Trying to figure that out, I'm just gonna do it. I also have Deanna here, who's gonna be taking over for Jan.
Oh, cool.
So, I don't know if you guys.
Yes. Help us say hello.
This is Deanna.
Johnny.
Hi. Scott Dury.
Beth Blair.
Ken Rashwick.
Nice to meet you.
I'm Ken Folsom, and this is Kathy Lee Kay.
Who's your selection? What's your actual title?
And now she's in the system.
Who does everything?
I'm at extension 500.
Okay.
She's 500.
You're 500, I'm 100, sorry.
And you're taking Jan's position over them?
Jan's gonna stick around long enough to get her trained, that way I'll spend every day in the building, and I can train Michael. That was the hard part, training Jan and trying to train Michael, it's, it's just too much trying to do both, so. Jan's in my, in mine, so, Jan's gonna stick around, get her trained, and then.
Any change in hours?
Or, so, I haven't figured out yet, she's gonna do the 30 that I was doing, but I haven't figured out what the hours is gonna be.
Yeah, that's what I remember, we had a brief discussion.
It'll be more than Jan, because Jan's doing Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, or it'll be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Great. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Is that basically the hours that the, where the public can come into the building to have questions?
Yep, the front doors will be unlocked.
Okay. Great, welcome, thank you.
Are you the one that we speak to about making sure there's no scheduling conflict with the training room up there?
Make sure he doesn't have anything planned, and?
Yeah.
The CCPC would like to meet Eric Lance United, 7.
Just one sec. Who is it, the CP?
C.C.P.C.
Canterbury Community Power. Committee. I was trying to think of what the last C was.
Yeah, we should get some kind of a?
We do have a shared calendar for all the buildings, so the meeting rooms, so once, once we get online, we'll get that calendar shared.
Yeah, maybe not have some.
That helps.
Do you want to finish Department Heads before we swear to Officer Dumas, or if we do this all, or why don't we do that? Officer Dumas, why don't you put that up front? I'm gonna have to put my glasses on, I've got fairly small print.
This is official, I stand.
Yeah, this is official. All right, so I'm gonna read the first part, and then we'll get to the swearing-in part, okay? So to Michael R. Dumas of Canterbury, in the county of Merrimack, whereas there is a vacancy in the office of the Canterbury Police Department in said town, and whereas we, the subscribers, have confidence in your ability and integrity to perform the duties of said office, we hereby appoint you, the said Michael R. Dumas, police officer for the town of Canterbury, and upon taking the oath of office, and having this appointment, and the certificate of said oath, recorded by the town clerk, you shall have the powers, perform the duties, and be subject to the liabilities of such office. Given our, under the first day of April? We'll work on that, we'll check dates.
It was the first day.
It was, okay, that was very good. Okay, good, all right, so Officer Dumas, if you would, raise your right hand, meet after me, and I'll try to make this a little easier than I did for the chief. So I, Michael R. Dumas.
I, Michael R. Dumas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties.
And perform all the duties.
Incumbent on me as police officer.
Incumbent upon me as police officer.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules.
Agreeable to the rules.
And regulations.
And regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And law.
And law.
Of the state of New Hampshire.
Of the state of New Hampshire.
This you do under the pains and penalties of perjury. Yes. Congratulations.
Thanks.
And we do the side also. One guy's telling you, you weren't the first one I swore in, he's now number two. I'll get it right eventually. That's right. All right, and Ken, we need to sign up here?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Of course you can.
Thank you.
I brought an extra, actually.
I have one under the table.
I always do.
And Deanna's starting on Monday.
Good deal. Relatives in the city of Concord, and are Captain Dumas?
No, I'm originally from Mass, but it seems like there's a lot of people in my last name.
There are, yeah, and you be proud.
Just signed by the name.
Thank you, chief, yeah, we're all set. Thank you, everybody, have a good night, stay safe. We'll put that down for now. John? And that's gonna be it for Department Heads.
Sam?
Oh, Sam, how did I forget Sam? You're halfway up here already, so, Sam, my apologies, you were very quiet there.
Since I last seen you, we've had a little mother nature.
Yes, we have.
Little snow, a lot of rain. At one point, we had eight roads closed, with trees and wires. We got T-7 back from Gaponi in time for the storm, which was good. We got T-1 back, and then we shifted back. There's a form oil up in one, it was gone, it'll be fixed.
Wait, once you sent it to be fixed, they sent it back, it was still pouring, you had to send it again?
It was fixed, it lasted a day, left the hall some snow, and sadly, we're in. Well, here it goes. Backhoe's been out working, thank you, and the boys have been out with the chipper, trying to do some cleanup, when it's being cooperated.
Yeah. John, is that typically what they do with the trees that I see on the sides of the road, that have, come down across the road?
I try, because getting the burn bit burned is sometimes difficult. Dave did a good job getting it, that first fire, he tried last Saturday, and he had to give up.
They were out on Hackleboro today, getting all the crap that had fallen down, that they had pushed off to the side, so thank you, Hackleboro's looking lovely.
We have a lot more roads to go.
Yeah.
We had some washouts this weekend, thank you for the phone call, that was a plug COVID on Borough Hill. Below Hampton's not the other side, but it was fine. And Carter Hill had a pretty good wash that we took care of today. I don't know, we're headed for grading roads and still doing brush pickup, and we'll be down a guy after Thursday.
Yeah, how's the new backhoe?
Yeah, it's a learning curve. Lot of technology.
Yeah.
Lot of technology.
That's a good thing, yes.
You're talking to the wrong person.
Let's say yes, let's say the technology's a good thing.
And I expect that we'll be down another person shortly.
Just before John leaves, we met last week, last Thursday, with Art Rose, and Ken was there, and Beth, and talked about the Art using the Aqua money on the dirt roads, and so waiting for some information from Art Rose to move forward with that.
That's good. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, John.
Sam, come on down, my apologies again.
That's okay. Unpaid receivable list is coming around. 2023 P.O. 1 and P.O. 2 are set to be leaned next Wednesday, it'll be Wednesday. So that will then condense those down into 2022, 2023 L.O. on for me now. We had tax training, Jesse and I went to a tax training last week, last Wednesday, and we've got the town clerk's training coming up in May.
Would you say that one more time, Sam, please? You're going to what?
Town clerk's training in May, I think it, this week, I think. Meeting is gonna be in June, so in the May meeting, I'll be starting to send you guys more information, but those top two 2021 liens are gonna need to be looked at.
Okay, yeah.
Decisions need to be made in June.
Yeah.
If they don't respond to the letters.
Yeah.
Notice about May, so it's beginning up, maybe a little early back. Need a little space I can move over. Did forward email, if you want to talk about that at all, about the chief. All the voting machines, it's been pushed off, so. State of New Hampshire sent out a memo this morning, this afternoon, rather than said that the second voting machine has been given conditional, conditional approval, but they're still not 100% there. So they're not gonna roll out for the voting machines, they're not gonna do anything until March of 2025. So we're still gonna be using the old machine for the September and November elections.
Ken, is there any action the board needs to take with respect to the? No, no, other than, as I said in my email, we encumbered money to spend it this year. Encumbering two years alone becomes a kind of bookkeeping nightmare, so I'll talk with Sam and Mary, and we'll figure out how we're gonna work this. Sounds good.
But for the upcoming November election, we'll have?
We'll use the old machine. Well, we've got primary, aren't we September?
Oh, it's September.
Yeah. Yeah, it's September and November, yeah, two more times, at least, yeah, right, that's a good point.
Is it leaking any oil?
No.
Good, then we're all set.
No leakage.
Good, glad to know that.
Question's me. Mine for me?
I think that was it, thank you.
Thank you.
That was awesome, thank you, Sam.
Rachel? Good evening.
Hello, it's me, Josh. Sorry for running in, but it seems like our timing is okay. So, here's what we have to record. I am working on a door opener for the front entrance. Of course, we'll remember when the building was built, the front entrance is actually the Rita Brasky Memorial Garden, which is now friends of ours, it's called the Library Garden, so that is what we refer to as the front door. We don't have a door assist, they've previously been very, very, very expensive, but I.
You mean the big push blue button, it opens, so you can, okay.
Exactly. And last January, you will remember, we did a total renovation, and we went around with a wheelchair to make sure we were compliant. And ADA does not mandate a door assist, but it sure would be very helpful for our staff and our patrons. So I have found a $600 one that other libraries have had very good luck in, so I'm about to ask my trustees perhaps to look into that. So I'm asking you if we have had any experience with door openers with other town buildings, I think not.
There isn't one of them?
No, okay, so I'll do the research, and I think we may have. So, I'll do the research, and I think we may have a real good alternative.
Hey, Rachel, if you were going to use that door assist on the front door, and they come in that little lobby, would you have to move the whole book sale to get a wheelchair through?
Exactly. Because right now, we just have to work on that. Everyone's spring cleaning, you've seen the front.
Yeah.
And people just leave their things there, which are gladly welcome. However, we constantly have to move them out for compliance. But that would be the door, only because that is more accessible and less room to wheel if they don't have more rest.
Got it.
So, looking forward to hopefully whenever Glad, was it Gladys? No, it wasn't. Who's going to come do my pillars?
Oh.
Had to ask, didn't you?
Well, it was Berwick, and then it was Bertrand.
Right.
And then it was Gladys.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Ken, I am too.
I know, yeah.
The pillar person.
I'll talk to- I'll talk to Joel.
Looking forward to them coming. And also, big shout out to Jim Snyder, who has really taken the solar panel in Burgers. Totally volunteer effort. He's in the library all the time, checking the panels. I text him just about every day to give them the feedback, and I really appreciate that. They just happen to be in my furnace room, but I am very happy to accept the free electricity. So, we're going to meet with an electrician this morning. You're probably aware of the work that they're doing, but I appreciate that as an active collaboration, I really appreciate that. So, that's really all we have about maintenance and the outside of the building. Other than that, the library is functioning beautifully, and and you've got your great color copier. And we got a good, great color copier. Remember, a great contractor to Sheba and color copies. And if you need as staff color copies with a contract, basically, all I pay for is paper. Do you have any questions for me?
Nope.
That sounds good, except where are you going to put all the books for the for the book sale, but that's a question that requires a lot of-
Oh, and the book sale.
And the book sale.
Cal and I have collaborated with Mary about the use of the town hall, and I think we've come up with a great alternative for the book sale for the day.
Oh, yeah.
Brought the speaker over and the microphone and some cords from down the base of the old small speaker that we had with a microphone, and it's got a couple of cordless mics with it. So, it's over there on the stage.
Oh, when did you do that?
Today. It's just that small speaker, but I think it would be okay for that.
I love it.
So, you don't have to run stuff back and forth.
I would really appreciate that. And you saw the new screen, I'm still going to replace the-
Yeah, and we'll chat about that.
Yeah, because I got it, it has a-
Right, you can lift it, yeah.
And it kind of looks like an awning
Yeah.
fit for inauguration.
Yeah.
Beautiful, but I'm still working on some fabric ties to kind of bound that up. But that would be wonderful if I didn't have to truck everything.
Yep, yep, so it's over there.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
Yep.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thanks, Rachel.
Last sign? What do you think?
Well, actually, our next appointment isn't until 6:15.
That's what I was looking at.
I think there's several people in here from the northern end of town, if you want to address the Life of Pond Dam, I'm guessing that's what most people are here for. We can talk about that.
Okay, yeah.
They're here, that would be good.
Yeah.
I had emailed you a letter from D E S. I have a copy right here if you need it.
Yeah, you want that?
Have it to refer to.
Oh, there's three copies of it in the new business?
Oh, okay.
Hold it, then I'll pull it up, because I like those.
Selecting some new business. I said, God, Kate. For you?
Thank you.
So, just a little, to start the conversation, a little background on this. We received this letter from the Board of Directors at Shaker Village. Wanted us to let us know that, because it's addressed to them, the town was not C C'd on it. However, the Shaker Village Board of Directors forwarded it to us as a as a message to let us know that there was an issue with the dam at Life of Pond. I think you guys have read the letter and understand what's going on up there. So, that's pretty much it.
Folks, why don't we do this? Does anybody want to address us? If so, why don't you come on up and?
I think I could just talk about what we know about it.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
Could you just, I think not everybody knows who you are, and since people watch Edgar's videos, they might want to know.
Yes, you're very popular. So, I don't live on Lyferd, but I'm part of the association.
Yeah.
So, a couple, a couple of years ago, myself and Jonas sat down with Shaker Village regarding the two dams. Prior to that, there were some conversations about them and concerns about the dams. Shaker Village, at that time, was asking the association to take the dams, knowing that Lyferd was going to need some work.
What year was this, Jonas, please?
Ten years ago.
It was under Leslie Nolan, and a couple, they had a couple people there that were legal counsel, not legal, I shouldn't say that, they were legal guidance. They were officially, so I want to say it was probably '21 or '22.
Close enough.
Yeah, it was somewhere in there. And so, we kind of went we went there saying we would take New Pond, because New Pond, our roads go to New Pond. We don't have any roads that, we don't, like, we have one, the association has a small piece of property that bought Lyferd. Other than that, it's all residents, and the difference for us at New Pond is that we do cross New Pond with the recreational vehicles and walking and bikes, whatever. And we do have those roads that go right up to it. So, New Pond is still registered, but we pay it, and some weird agreement we came upon, we pay the registration fee, but D E S is kind of has that off of their radar, New Pond. But Lyferd here, Mike recently noticed that it was leaking, and that's where D E S came back in. And then, there was this dispute when we met with Shaker Village about who the owner was, and there's nothing that shows that it was ever transferred. I'm just going to reference some notes that Jonas gave me today, because he's much better at keeping a lot of this straight. So. When the property was sold, he's saying that there was no mention of the dams and the deeds. And when we sat down with Shaker Village, they said they were kind of struggling with the same thing. They thought that because they no longer use the water, that they had kind of separated themselves from the land. But there was nothing to show that. That was the main thing. We sat there with them, it was the height of the housing, like, houses were selling, people weren't inspecting them. So, that's around the year, so like '21, '22. They mentioned that, that they possibly would have to breach it, and we expressed concern that if you breach it, you may have quite a lawsuit on your hands from the Butters. Like, they're buying top dollar property right now with the pond there. We also suggested that they try to work with some of the Butters to come up with a resolution, see what they can do. We kind of mentioned that, you know, they're the ones who kind of know how to look for grants and stuff, and that maybe if everyone worked together. And as far as we know, since we have Butters here, they have done no efforts to reach out to the Butters. We haven't heard from them since that conversation. And now, this has come back up, and again, they want to contest their ownership, which would, according from what Jonas explained to me in that letter, would leave them with D E S deciding to now breach the dam, which would really hurt the residents that live around the pond. So, I think that's kind of the best summary that I can give of it. So, there's concern about how it impacts the residents, and I really don't know.
You are, it's actually a good summary, thank you for that.
Does it say in the letter, though, that D E S wants to breach the dam? I don't remember reading that.
It does not. It says that they, they feel that the water level should be lowered to the base of the dam.
And that was immediate, and the immediate reaction?
That was their immediate remedy.
Yeah.
They have not communicated, at least to the town or anybody other than in your conversations, that they would breach it.
I, yeah, I haven't read the letter, but when I was talking to Jonas, he had said if something had said if the ownership continued to be contested, and no one took ownership of it, that would be the res- it sounded like that would be the resolution.
Okay, that's bought in this letter, but yeah.
That's, you know, that's not in, I don't remember.
Yeah, just explaining where I got that from.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
How high is the dam, do we know?
That, Mike, can you answer those?
I, I don't have the accurate measurement, but
10 feet, 20 feet?
It's 15 feet tall, according to our records. I'll be glad if I can speak if you like.
Can I explain that?
Yeah, in general. So, I'm Jim Weber with State of New Hampshire, I'm a dam safety engineer. And I wasn't sure if I was going to be here tonight, apparently I am.
Thank you for coming.
State of New Hampshire, and what was your title?
I'm a dam safety engineer.
Thank you.
So, I've been involved with Lyferd Pond Dam, as well as most of the other former Shaker dams, for 10, 12 years.
Okay.
And so, the town should have been C C'd on that letter. You were on a C C line, I'm sorry. If you did not get a copy of it, it's a routine for us, and we issue a letter to the dam owner, especially in something in this regard, is to get a copy of the town. So, I'll try to figure out why you did get a copy, but I'm glad you have a copy now.
Yeah.
And going forward, you should get C C'd on every available way that this dam, or any other dam attached to it. So, in terms of the ownership situation, Canterbury Shaker Village started contesting ownership again back in 2020 and 22. They provide us the opinion from an attorney that was working for them pro bono, stating that they didn't own the dam. Part of their contention, as I understand it, was because the word dam was never involved in any of the deeds or any of the property transactions. What was very clearly reserved when the property was sold by the Shakers was the water rights. Back in 1996, we had our land agent for D E S look through all the deeds, because back in the mid-'90s, they were also contesting ownership. He looked through all the deeds and all the property transactions, and he focused on that reservation of water rights. It would also include easements for access to maintain the water rights. His interpretation, based on case law, is that water rights equals dams unless they're specifically called out separately. Dams and water rights can be owned separately, but frequently, they're not. Because obviously, you can't exercise the water rights unless you have a dam to have it. So, so anyway, D E S is of the firm opinion that Canterbury Shaker Village is the legal owner of the dam, even though they don't appear to own any land up here. It is not necessarily unusual for the ownership of the dam, the ownership of the land underneath it to be different. That happens frequently in New Hampshire. Well, maybe not frequently, but it does happen. This is not the first time we've seen it. So, based off of our review of that, once we found out that we had a situation currently ongoing out of Lyferd Pond Dam, we are in the process of drafting an administrative order to Canterbury Shaker Village. In our opinion, they are the legal responsible party for the dam. As part of that administrative order, Canterbury Shaker Village will have the right to appeal that administrative order, and that would be the venue for them to then provide a a legal argument of why they don't own the dam. And as part of that process, the Attorney General's office would defend the state's position of what would be determined, obviously, who knows? But until that time, and until a decision is made by a more appropriate authority, we think they own the dam. And so, we are proceeding with asking them to address the current situation. So, the current situation, just to make sure we're on the same page, you all have the letter, obviously. But Mike Fernard was walking along the dam, and so, tell them to own. And so, and there's water running from out of this one. So, Mike and I, Jim Samporn, who then texted me. I went out there Monday morning after this, on the 1st of April, not April Fool's Day. And we went out and had a look at it, talked to Mikey, said we need to be out there as well. Looked at the conditions out there. I looked at the dam a number of times in the past, but never had this quantity of seepage in the route each flow of the dam, although there always has been some. But the water level is also higher than it has been at any point when I previously looked at the dam. So, we got very concerned, because internal erosion through a dam, if the secondary causes a failure, overtopping meeting the first. Back in 2021, I performed a dam bridge analysis for the main dam at Lyferd to determine if there were any downstream impacts expected. The Batrow study indicated that 106 would be overtopped by more than a foot likely sustaining some damage, as well as just some generalized flooding around the motor speedway in their large grassy areas. Previous to that, we had already identified that the structures built onto the dike, the residential houses, potentially, if it were to fail, the dike were to fail at that location, would have impacts to their houses, to their foundations. And so, we have-
Jim, can I interrupt for half a second?
Please do.
So, with the letter that, when you went and examined the dam and found that it was, it was eroding, is that when you, you sent a letter of deficiency to them, was that 2021?
No. The terming that it was eroding, that's also what happened this year.
Okay.
That's the letter that you, that we sent out April 6th.
Okay.
Previous, a routine inspection, which happened every four years on this dam, we sent out a letter of deficiency back in 2021.
Okay. And did they dispute ownership then, or did they just?
Soon after that is when they disputed ownership.
Thank you.
They have not done anything beyond doing a little bit of coordination with the association and neighbors to get some tree removal and other things. They would have been asking them to provide an emergency action plan, as well as to remediate the dam, hire an engineer. They really haven't done anything for a long time. And once again, they come back to contesting the ownership. So, we'll see where that plays out. But at this point, the state is going to issue that administrative order. That order is going to further identify things beyond just this letter that they need to do in terms of hiring an engineer, lowering the water levels, reduce stress and pressure on the dam, maintaining that lower level until, until the condition of the dam can be further assessed and an engineering solution implemented. What they're going to do with that, I can't speak, I don't know.
Does the administrative order come with a timeframe?
It does.
And what happens if they do not?
If they don't, with D E S, we have to make the determination of what the appropriate action would be. Very likely, if D E S gets directly involved with doing something with this dam, we are going to breach it to reduce the public safety impacts. Until such time as the owner can properly address and reconstruct it with a permit. We realize that no one would be happy with that situation, so we're sure not going to do that lightly. If condition warranted during an emergency situation, we could also go out there and do the same thing, regardless of what is happening with the administrative order. I went out before I came over to the screening, had a look at it again. The water level was down a little bit from what it was on Friday. On Friday, actually, I'm sorry, I had to step back. On Friday, we went out and had a look at the dam, just to see if there was any change in the conditions since we've been out there last. The sinkhole of the dam had expanded in size, was a little bit bigger, was still flowing a lot of water. The water level was higher at Lyferd than it was on the 1st of April, and was actually flowing over the spillway by just a smaller amount. We went over, had a look at the dike. The dike was within probably about six inches of overtopping, and there were sinkholes open, invisible, very small ones on the dike with excess water coming out, much larger quantities than the leak through the dike had ever happened before in our observation.
Can this dam, like, breach itself, regardless of?
That's what a failure would be, yes. Yes.
And is it a life safety issue, if it does?
If it has a dam because of the impacts it could add to the structures, or if the dam itself were going to breach, two dams or 106. So, not really expecting a loss of life, it would be a high hazard dam if we were expecting that. But we are expecting to see if it has a possibility of impact if it were to fail. Failure is a computer model, which makes a lot of worst-case assumptions, so it may or may not really happen in that regard. But for public safety and training purposes and evacuation purposes, we look at a reasonable worst-case situation. So, anyway, we contact Canterbury Shaker Village again on Friday. So, anyway, we contacted Canterbury Shaker Village again on Friday, saying, whoa, things have gotten worse. Water level is even higher, sinkholes are getting bigger, new sinkholes on the dike. And they, of course, haven't really had time to respond to any of that. I mean, I once again looked at this morning, or this afternoon before I came here. The level is a little bit lower than it was on Friday, and the situation of the dike does not visibly happen anymore in terms of sinkholes. There is still more water flowing, but not nearly as much as there was on Friday. Water is still flowing over the spillway. Sinkhole doesn't, and the dam itself doesn't look to have changed significantly. And so, we would really like the water level to be lowered, because that will reduce that pressure, pressure and stress on the dam.
So, is there something there that you can open a valve when it starts flowing out of there, or what happens?
There is a valve at the base of the dam that the shakers used to use to release water to go downstream, go across the great ditch, and go down to the main village. It's not been operated in decades and decades and decades.
That would be interesting.
My guess is that even if you could manage to open it, which is a very big if, you probably don't want to be standing there when you do it, but you have another way to try to operate it, except for being standing there. But if you did, you'd never get close to that.
So, what are you going to do? Chop a hole out of the dam so you can release some of it?
Canterbury Shaker Village, as I understand it, is looking into the possibilities of installing some siphons over the dam to use that to lower the water level. That way, obviously, it would be not intrusive. The only other way to do it would be to breach it potentially, in a safe and, you know, do it slowly, so we don't have any impacts downstream.
But they are indeed looking at siphons?
My understanding from Canterbury Shaker Village, Tom Mafalata, is that they have had discussions internally amongst the board. They have done a subcommittee looking at this, and that one of the things they are looking at is possible to install some siphons. I have had no official communication, we've got phone conversations, so I really don't know whether that's just being discussed, or whether they're really trying to implement a plan. We have strongly encouraged them to hire a consulting engineer who is familiar with dams. And I don't know if they have made any contacts on that regard either. So, at this point, we're going to issue this administrative order. We're going to keep at least a weekly eye on the dam. Mike Pinnard, who lives in between the dike and the dam, is going to keep an eye on things for us, and we'll just hope anything, you know, changes, any significant matter that we need to be aware of. Right now, the weather forecast for the next ten days looks pretty good. No real significant rain. The weather forecast, we all know how well that works, so who knows what that means? But at least it's not, you know, forecasted rain, 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 rain.
That's good.
So, but that is good. But once again, this water level needs to come down, and that's going to take some kind of action. I don't know if Canterbury Shaker Village is going to actually do anything. We're going to keep an eye on it. And regardless of whether they do anything or not, if it does get to the point where we have grave concerns, we will likely have, our state crews come in, and we will probably breach the dam. We don't want to go there. We want something else to happen.
There's no way even, I mean, there's no different way, like, you're, or you wouldn't use siphons, you would just?
Correct. If the state's going to get involved, the way the law, as I understand it, is set up for us to do this, would be only be in an emergency situation to protect property or lives downstream. And we would do it in a positive manner, where we could then walk away from it, and that protection would be maintained. So, siphons, if they're installed, we don't have the money in our budget to install siphons. We don't have the manpower to maintain those siphons. Siphons are finicky. They lose suction, they have to be reprimed. They're not just installed and walked away from.
Anybody who's had a fish tank knows.
Correct. So, we would not consider installing siphons. We would do something that would mean that we would be able to provide the public safety benefit and not have to maintain that. And so, I realize that no one in the room probably wants that to happen. I don't want that to happen either. But if it came down to that, and the state gets involved, that's what the state would do. Hopefully, we can, I'll find a solution that doesn't involve that happening.
So, I'm sorry, Ken, go ahead.
Is that the original dam the shakers put in?
Yes.
Is that something you can repair, or is it something that needs to be completely rebuilt, or how does that work?
It would depend on what a full evaluation uncovered. But generally, these type dams, in order to address the deficiencies that we know are there, is either build an earl of berm on the downstream side of the dam, with the material being specifically sized, that acts as an aggregate filter, so you can't lose any more material from inside the dam. And that buffers would then provide support for the dam, and the filter, we mean that the water could come through, but there would be no loss of soil, no internal erosion that could lead to failure. You could also potentially build an upstream concrete wall to cut all the seepage off, but that may not address the stability issues that are likely out there as well. We have a lot of these style dams, all of them in New Hampshire, not all built by the shakers. And some of them are much smaller, some of them are much bigger. Minham's Pond Dam in Northwood is owned by, I'm sorry, Nottingham, is owned by the state of New Hampshire. It's a very, very large version with a same-style construction. We have built lots of concrete upstream walls, trying to cut it off over the decades with minimal success. We are about to issue a permit to reconstruct that, and they're going to do a large earl of berm on the downstream side with the filtration system.
And what type, what is the name of that type of dam? Does it have a specific?
We call them a double-stone-wall dam. In older language, they call it a double-stone-wall dike. Dike and dam get kind of interchanged over history, of what they're used for. In modern nomenclature, we consider something a dam that has a spillway, and a dike to be an impounding structure that doesn't have a spillway.
But there's both on Lifer, huh?
Correct. The shakers took advantage of the land that their members had, not necessarily a quick location to build a dam.
Got it.
Is the situation downstream of the dam lend itself to doing that kind of a retaining system to lower it?
It would be challenging, because as we understand it, the shakers don't own any of the land downstream. So, they would have to get whoever owns that land, which I believe is Mr. Pounds, the butler on the right, to give them permission, or give them an easement or something, along those lines, to do that. Now, I don't think that would be a problem, because obviously, it's in everyone's best interest to do so. And I don't think the land has any value to use. But once again, this would be complicated. Even if the shakers said, right now, we are absolutely the owners, and we want to fix this, and we have money, there's still all the permitting involved, there's all the, the... In addition, just to having the easement or transfer of ownership to get the land to build that on, they have to be able to get there, they have to have access easements.
There's no road.
Long-term, there is no road there. You can kind of get there from Hancock Road, or you can kind of get there from the end of Robin Shore Drive, but how to get there, go across private property to do so.
How far is it on Hancock Road?
I'm not sure the exact distance.
About a quarter mile.
Is there a trail that goes there?
No, well, no.
No? Sort of?
Yeah, it depends.
Sort of doesn't help if you're trying to build a dam, I don't think.
Yeah, and obviously, if all this was done.
There is possible access, I think.
Okay. If all this is done.
I could grant access if. If our committee needed to view this, at the end of Robin Shore.
Okay.
Easy access.
Can I ask a question? Is it possible to, I'm in this business a little bit. My name is Bob Rogaski. I live on 611 Shaker Road. I'm on the non-association side. Is there a way to lower the water level a small amount to limit future damage, or at least to slow the process? And is there a way to do some form of remediation legally ourselves, or as a group or as a town, to slow this process down at least a little bit? I mean, if we drop the water down a level, what does that mean to the people who are on the water? Are we have no water? Are we down to two feet of water? What actually happened? At my end of the dock, I'm probably ten or eleven feet. Mike and I are probably, probably the deepest part of the pond currently. But what happens if we do lower the water? Are we bone-drying there? Or, I mean, are we down to four feet of water? I don't really understand the ramifications of an adjustment down, and how far that would go, because the dam is obviously one depth. And way on the other side, as you come on Robin Shore Drive, it's two or three inches of water at times. So, I don't really understand how that ties together.
Who's the best person to answer that?
Probably, yeah, our expert is.
Our expert.
So, if Canterbury Shaker Village, or whoever is responsible and owns the dam, hires an engineering consultant, one of the things that engineering consultant would do would be to determine, do calculations to determine how much of a breach and how deep of a breach might need to be done temporarily to lower the level to a safe level. That evaluation has not been done by any consultant. It has not been done by the state. So, I don't think there's an easy answer right now. But it is conceivable that you could put a, you know, minimum-depth breach in the dam, or the dike, maybe, to lower the water level, I don't know, two feet, four feet, six feet, whatever it might take, to be safe. Once again, if the state comes in, we're going to lower it as much as we can, and because we're going to be out there one time, just to provide.
Well, that's what I'm asking, is if we lower the water, is there a way to do some remediation at the same time? Like, I saw, I saw concrete repair products that are used in dams. I'm involved with architects and engineers. I don't want to say I can tell you how to do this. But that is commonly done with a rock backup and some form of concrete structure as a backup. It's not necessarily the water that I'm worried about. You explained it very well. It's the release and the pressure and the debris that went down. If you had some form of a rock structure and some form of reinforced concrete set up there, just in a forum system, that would probably limit some of the pressure on the dam, even if you didn't do anything else. Do we have the ability to do any of those things, or are we just stuck here waiting for this to happen?
I'm not a lawyer, but as I understand it, you would have to have the permission, obviously, with the property on you, you're going to do any work on. And if you're doing anything related to the dam, you're going to have to have the permission of the person or group that's responsible, owner of that infrastructure. And right now, that latter thing may be impossible to give, because there may not be a clear answer. I mean, my guess is if you approach Canterbury Shaker Village and ask their permission to do something with the dam right now, they might not want to give it to you, because they might think that implicates that they own the dam. And so, I'm not sure there's an easy answer.
Because I understand the Robin Shore Drive part, but basically, if that pond's not accessible, even though there's probably, what, twenty-four house owners that have waterfront property on that?
There are twenty-four houses that buck the dam.
You're going to have two hundred houses in a neighborhood decrease their value. Even though they may not be on that pond, and you still have access to one, the other pond, you're still devaluing two hundred houses. And that's going to affect not just that neighborhood, your entire tax basis. Be truthful.
But we don't know what that really means, right? There's the DES way to take care of the dam, which is, we're going to lower it as much as we can, one and done, and we need to make it safe, and then we don't want to maintain it, correct?
Right.
And then there's the, if Shaker Village takes ownership of it and hires a consulting firm, and they come out and evaluate it and say, well, we can do this, that, or the other thing, that would be the best case for the others.
It doesn't sound like that's going to happen, because they haven't done it yet. They've shown no interest.
Oh, but they also haven't gotten an administrative order, correct, up to this point?
Correct. They have not. The only enforcement action we've done against Canterbury Shaker Village is they were not paying their annual, annual dam registration fee over the nineties and two thousand. And we didn't enforce on them to pay that fee, and they did pay it off. But they have not done anything in terms of hiring an engineer or doing any actual work, to my knowledge. Up to this point.
Up to this point.
Correct. And we have not enforced on them to acquire them to do that. We issued letters of deficiency, which are somewhat enforceable, but are not typically enforced on them. Typically, we enforce it as that administrative order that they're going to get issued now.
And this is very complicated.
I mean, yes, it is.
At then, there's always, what studies are going to have to be required for impact of wildlife and wetland? And, you know, you're going to drop, if you're going to drop water eight feet, there's going to be a lot of life that's going to suffer, not just, what's my property value? And I own property there. And, you know, Doug's my butler. He's across the pond from me. Joshua's our butler. He's got large properties. I mean, these guys, they've got waterfront. You know, this is kind of huge.
I close on a property in three days on the pond. I'm a little surprised to find this out when I'm signing another property, because I'm buying the property to protect the integrity of the neighborhood. I don't want expansion. I want to protect it. And to find this out, it's quite a shock. And it seems like we need some kind of a plan or action plan, but it doesn't sound like we can have it. It seems like we should at least try and have some kind of a backup. And I know it sounds like I'm speaking for myself, but it's the whole community that's going to be affected by this, not just the two hundred or less, or the twenty-four of us, if you want to break it down, see nothing about the environment. That's why I'm here, because of the environment.
In my view, I'd say, if they do take ownership, if they do get an engineer involved, and he does evaluate, we can drop it four feet, or five feet, or whatever. Temporarily, while they mitigate anything that can be remediated at the time, would be way more reasonable than if they say, too bad, call it DES, and, you know. I don't see where their action, until they own it or don't own it, how long could this go on?
And just to be clear, if Canterbury Shaker Village acknowledges their ownership, they always have the option of removing the dam. They have to go through the permitting process, but they have no obligation to maintain the dam if they don't want to. Any dam owner can always remove their dam, as long as they have the appropriate permit. And typically, unless there is deeds language in the deeds of people around the water body, typically, there's not necessarily any recourse on that. Obviously, it's making my head happy, I think, that. Obviously, it impacts tax values as well, but there's not necessarily any way to preclude that.
So, if that dam is removed, does it then get cleaned out, and you've got a fresh hole to put a dam in there? Or how does?
Well, if it gets, well, if it gets removed, it would be just a root, so there's no dam, and there's no impoundment caused by it.
Right.
They'd go back to whatever its natural conditions were, which is probably just a stream with some wetlands.
No, I understand that, but. So, can you rebuild the dam at that point?
Not really, no. The permitting environment from a wetlands point of view is such that building a new dam at a location that doesn't currently have a dam on it is pretty challenging.
Even if there was a dam?
Even if there was one historically.
That's a Ted banner.
And once again, that's not, I can't really speak for what wetlands would do, but that's my understanding of it. It is, now, if the dam were partially breached in order to reduce the water pressure, but most of the dam was still there, then it would be a reconstruction, and that's a different permitting environment for both the dam area and for wetlands. And that's not necessarily hard to do. That gets done all of the time. But if you fully remove the dam, then going back and putting a new dam in at a later point in time could prove a very big challenge from the permitting standpoint.
So, in your opinion, is there only two options? DES either does their thing, or Shaker Village takes ownership, and they do what they're going to do, either hire a consultant or get rid of the dam? Is there any other option in there, say, for the butlers to buy the dam? I don't know. Is there, what else is there in the scope of things that can be done, in your opinion?
Right, no. So, I mean, I think that Canterbury Shaker Village would be more than happy to acknowledge ownership in order to transfer it to somebody. You know, obviously, there would be some legalities involved in there, but that would be a different type of a situation. Obviously, whoever the owner is, if it's the current owner or a new owner, they're still going to be responsible for meeting the dam safety regulations, so that's not going to change what needs to be done to the dam. In terms of that other, no matter who it is, they're going to need to hire that engineering consultant, because you're going to have to do an evaluation and figure out what it's been going to cost to bring it up to modern standards, and what it's going to cost to remove it. Removal is always that option out there. In the general, generally, removal of the dam is about the same cost as a major reconstruction of a dam. But it means you don't have a dam, you don't have the annual fees down the road, you don't have any maintenance or any other responsibilities or liabilities.
But you also don't have the water.
But you don't have the water. And once again, unfortunately, we have a lot of circumstances where the dam owner doesn't necessarily have any benefit anymore. You know, back in the day, water was valuable. You know, it provided power. Doesn't do that anymore. If I had to guess what the shakers were thinking back in the day, where they reserved the water rights is because they saw that it was valuable, and then they wanted to not give it away. But actually, the circumstances now are different.
And the value is different. Not the use of the water, but the beauty of the water, and wildlife, and whatever else. Is there a way to find out what, is there an easy way to find out the cost of the consult engineering, consulting engineer?
Canterbury Shaker Village has a proposal from several years ago, from an engineering consultant, to evaluate the dam and provide alternatives. consultant to evaluate the dam and provide alternatives for rehabilitation. I don't know what the cost of that was. It was never actually turned into a contract nor never done.
Is that public information or is that their?
It's between them and the consultant, so I don't think it's really public information. And we don't have a copy of it. I just know it was done because I met the engineer out there to explain the circumstances that they're taking, to make sure that their proposal was going to cover everything that Canterbury Shaker Village needed.
Does hundreds of thousands sound, because when we met with them, that was part of it. They were saying the engineering alone was extremely expensive.
I wouldn't expect the engineering evaluation to be hundreds of thousands. I'm not sure I'd expect it to even be a hundred thousand. Rehabilitation of the dam is probably going to start at a half million dollars and go upwards. In the modern, the modern price structure that we're all living in now, everything's crazy expensive.
Joshua, did you have something?
I'm also. Hi, from Lisa. Joshua's.
Glad to hear.
Lisa Shapiro.
Hi. Since we have the state here, and I just want to understand the process because you didn't see the town. I guess that was an oversight or they didn't.
Didn't see the town. I don't know why they didn't get that.
Okay, well, what I'm trying to understand is there's a lot of talk that you said about ownership, but you also sort of threatened to come in and breach.
We're not issuing that as a threat. It's just what, if public safety mandates and the dam owner is not reacting responsibly and the state has to get involved, that is what the state would do. I'm going to say that because I didn't want people to think that we would come in and install siphons or do some immediate action.
No, I understand.
But it's not intended as a threat. We want the dam owner to be responsible and do the right thing.
No, I understand that goal, but as an abutter, I didn't get a letter from you. You're talking everything about Shaker Village and ownership, and you've sort of threatened if there's a public safety or breaching. Am I waking up next week and you've decided as the state to breach with no notice to the town, no notice to the abutters? What, can you tell me the process as an abutter and as the town that has an interest that we're going to know what you're doing?
Okay, just so you know, I did send an email with a copy of this letter, as you understand one. So the Sherwood Forest Association.
We don't.
If you'd like for us to include that, I'll give you a business card and I'll be glad to email you copies of any other documents we have going out because once it goes out our doors, unless it's something that the lawyers say we can't do, otherwise it's public information, so I'll be more than happy to send you a copy of it. In terms of process, we're going to issue this administrative order, send an email. I'll be glad to do that. All right, here the whole.
What a thing you did.
Would you be honest with me?
Yes, actually.
Okay, no worries.
I think we've tried to get one more of the letter, isn't it?
Is it?
It is.
Oh, Doug, it says right here.
But, okay.
It's right here.
Your tax office pays for it.
Thank you. You're going to have to hand out forms.
So we're going to issue this administrative order. And that administrative order, there are going to be deadlines that Canterbury Shaker Village has to legally comply with. They have a short window of time. I apologize, I don't remember what the exact timing is, that they have to possibly appeal this administrative order. But they basically have to notify the state that they're appealing the administrative order in a pretty short order. I want to say it's, maybe it's two weeks or something along those lines. So if they do that, if they appeal it, then everything kind of goes on hold until it goes before the Water Council, which means, I believe, either monthly or quarterly. I apologize, I don't know so many things. We don't do this very often. So this is not a routine occurrence for us. And if that went on hold, then everybody would just be keeping an eye on it, crossing their fingers on the weather and hoping nothing happens.
But if you're, for example, that's a good example, so you're going to send them this letter, the administrative letter, and maybe they appeal. It seems like there's a whole lot of abutters, people in town, that have an interest in that proceeding.
Sure.
And in your analysis and what's ongoing, how do we, I just, how do I make sure I don't wake up next week and you've decided to breach the pond, breach the dam?
Once again, how many weeks after?
A couple of weeks after. How do we, I hear everything you're saying. I'm trying to make sure there's a process so that folks can keep apprised and.
And so, once again, we'll share all the information with anybody who wants it, anything that goes public out to the owner. We'll do that, so you'll be apprised, everything we're apprised to at that point. If the weather conditions got bad and we thought that there was a very immediate risk of the dam or dike failing, and we decided that it was in the best interest to, of the public safety to breach the dam, we'd in the D E S. There is an internal process that goes all the way up to the commissioner before that decision is made. It is not made lightly. So it's not me that's going to say, just go out there and dig a hole in the dam. I don't know that there is any public input in that decision. I don't think, because it's based off of emergency circumstances, I don't think there's really a public input into that, but I can try to find that out and I'll be glad to get back to everyone on that. Certainly, right now, you can all contact Canterbury Shaker Village and go, hey, we want to be involved, we want to try to figure out what we can do to help and see what they said. And once again, I don't know what they're going to say. Certainly, when the association and the abutters got together to work on clearing the trees and everything on the dike and the dam over the course of 2019 through, I think, about 2021, Canterbury Shaker Village acknowledged that it was okay for them to do that. I don't know that they said, we're the owner and you can do it, but they certainly were aware of the work going on and they certainly didn't, were involved with it being an okay thing to be done.
Can I ask you a question?
Then they appeared.
Under 90 degrees.
I'm the one who asked them for permission and they were saying, yep, you have permission. They came in with sandwiches and coffee. They were very cooperative.
Can we limit the water going into the dam? We're talking about water going out. I walk my dogs every day where the main entrance to the water is, is they're going to consider limiting the water that's coming into the pond, so not even addressing the dam itself and slowing that process down. Maybe, you know, looking at this from a different approach. I mean, there's one entrance where the water comes in, basically, unless it's torrential rain and then it'll come down the sides of the property, but there's one stream that comes in.
But where would you put that water?
But that's why I'm asking why that isn't being considered.
Well, I think there's a couple of reasons. That water has to go somewhere and it has to be somewhere just as big as Lifer Pond, and so I don't think it would exist as a feasible option. You'd have to have the, whoever owns all that land that you would try to divert it to would have to give you permission to do that. You would have to get a wetlands permit. You might have to get a dam reconstruction permit. We're probably talking nine miles down the road, even assuming everybody said yes and the money wasn't a problem. And that's what it has to pay for.
The thing is, is if you're breaching the dam, that water's still going to be coming in at some, at some level anyways.
Correct, but then it's going to go through whatever breach it might be in the dam and not in town. So, I mean, I'm not saying this is impossible, but I can't see in my head how that would really work.
I wanted to say something about lowering the level. There's been reports, I think it's from the dam bureau or D E S of some sort, over the years, and this is going back some decades, about utrification of the pond, and that's been a problem. That's when the pond starts basically becoming a wetland, filling in and stuff. And lowering it significantly is probably going to hasten that, at least it's my understanding of it. And so, you know, lowering it, I'm not sure really that's a solution. We're going to wind up losing, it might take a little time, but we're going to wind up losing the pond through that process. And so, lowering really isn't necessarily that good an option.
My understanding is that utrification is the process, basically of siltation and vegetation growing and then impoundment. If there's not an impoundment there, I don't think that that process would continue. Yes, you would still have growth of the stuff that's now underwater, but I don't know that they would actually, yeah, I'm not sure. I don't think it would have, utrification is a decades, hundreds of years long process. It's not just a few years process. I don't think any short-term lowering of the water or anything else is going to have a significant impact on utrification. Maybe that's a better answer to that.
Excuse me, Jim, if people wanted to talk to someone at Shaker Village, would Tom Muffletto be the person to contact?
He is my current contact. They now have an executive director now. Todd is their facilities person.
Todd or Tom?
Todd.
Todd.
Todd who?
Muffletto.
He was here, correct?
If you go to their Canterbury Shaker Village website, his contact information is listed there. He has told me that for now, without having an executive director, he is our contact with them. I have had no direct contact with anyone on the board, even though Todd has clearly stated the board is the one having the discussions and making the decisions. He's just the person that's stuck answering the emails on the phone. So certainly, if you're going to reach out to Canterbury Shaker Village, I'll reach out to Todd. I'm going to get his phone number and email both on their website.
Scott, thank you very much.
And I really appreciate, and I'm sure Commissioner Scott will do a good job in making sure it's all public before they ruin our environment in New Hampshire on behalf of safety of 106. But I appreciate what you're doing. I would just like to comment that I appreciate the selectmen and women bringing this forward and the town manager, you know, Sherwood Forest and the rest of the abutters. This is a really important part of Canterbury, and I think there's a long, not very proud history of this town and that part of town. And I would just ask yourself to think about, when things like this happen, we all think it's a priority and if we think, well, it's their problem and it's Shaker Village, this is really the core of this, this community. And, you know, my, my house isn't on the pond. It's a 12-minute walk to the pond. Clearly, it would lower the value and it would lower, it would destroy the value for the 24 people and for all the 200. But this is really part of this community and I know it's not easy and it's complicated and it's going to take a lot of work, but, you know, I know when you ran for office, you talked about it and Jonas, you know, has been engaged in it and I'm really glad to see some people here, but I, I just hope we don't throw up our hands and say, not our problem, because this will be such a blight on this town if we end up with some kind of radical breach and destroy that, that land. That would be really a very sad outcome. And I don't know the solution, it's going to involve everybody there, but I hope the town, it's not easy what your role is, but when it fails, you'll wear it too, I guarantee you.
Well, doesn't it sound like anybody wants to have that happen and that they're trying to get it not to happen?
Yes, so thank you.
Which is not going to say that it won't happen, but no, it does not. No one wants to start there by any means.
Just so you're aware, there are a series of statutes that allow town to take ownership of a dam. I think you definitely want to do it, but there's a process during laws and setting up, but then, of course, then you'd be the responsible party.
It's the issues, the money.
Unfortunately, that is the question, it's the money.
Yeah. Jim, in terms of immediate action, is there anything that the town can do right now?
We are actually, have already started producing an emergency action plan for this dam, so we've already contacted the fire chief to figure out what that, the process is. We're not on what gets called, where that dispatches how it's done. If the person doing that doesn't have interest, who would be the best person to be, except the chief? Do you have any in town?
The chief is the, yeah.
That's common. So if we have any problems, we'll do that, but we're going to do that, Canterbury Shaker Village is responsible for doing this. But once again, our primary focus is public safety. So we want to get this document out there because right now, if someone called 911, so there's a problem with Lifer Dam in Canterbury, a ton of loud, and we're not going to have any clue what's going on because they're not going to be officially contacted. It's going to have to go through a long process before it gets to Canterbury or we go, hold it, the problem's over here. So we're going to do that because we think that needs to be done. Right now, I can't really think of anything else. I think that obviously, we obviously need to stay in communication and try to figure this out, but unfortunately, the ball is really in Canterbury Shaker Village's hands as we see it. I don't know what that means. It took them a very long time to rebuild Turning Mill Pond Dam after it failed for the second time, and that has very much value to them because that's their fire protection order for the village. And so, I don't know what that says, I don't know where they got the money from for that or how long it really took them to do that, but unfortunately, this is a very challenging
Questions from selectmen.
I think mine have all been answered.
Folks from anybody else?
Maybe not happily, but all answered. Thank you.
Sir?
Yeah, Jim or anyone, would there be a process to get any kind of grant money from the state to facilitate?
The state does not have any money for the rehabilitation of dams. There are some ARPA funds currently that have all been allocated for high hazard dams, which this is not a high hazard dam, but those are the only monies that the state has. I'm not aware of any funding through Department of Historical Resources that came up when they were rebuilding the Turning Mill Pond Dam. So unless something has changed, I'm not aware of any funding sources there. Unfortunately, rehabilitation of dams is a tough, tough thing, and a lot of it is because of the liability. So there are, there is a dam, a historic dam down in Wyndham that a gentleman spent several years of his life colliding together funding from all kinds of sources to rebuild a dam down there after it was drained. And he is more than welcome to share his experience with anyone who might be interested, but once again, that was a lot of effort. And they managed to do it, but it took years. So there's not an easy find money unfortunately.
Was that an example of they breached it and had to go back from the ground up so it was a greater permitting process?
They breached it under our order and, but they, but they just had just enough hole to keep it drained. The rest of the dam was there, so it was a standard reconstruction application for wetlands and for the dam bureau when they got around to rebuild it.
Okay, thank you.
What town was that?
It was in Wyndham.
Thank you.
All right, I could provide some specific information. I need to make sure he's still willing to talk to people, but he always was in the past, but I haven't talked to him in seven years now.
Can I ask one more question that would be to the board if possible? If it comes down to remediation is not going to be done by Shaker Village, how would one present having the town take over the dam and is that something that would be a line item like for a fire truck or something like, what is the process and where does the board stand as a group on that if it comes down to town ownership or losing the dam? I know it's putting you on the spot, but I'm on the spot right now. A lot of money on the spot.
Ken, can you speak to the legal process? My, my best guess, I've been doing this for a while, my best guess would be that it would have to be a warrant article in town meeting, would be the residents, the legislative body that would have to authorize that for a purchase of that size. And we would have to know obviously the cost.
No, and that's why I'm asking. I think it's better to have these questions asked not too late.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I think you're right when you used the comparison of a fire engine. Unfortunately, I think we're up in that range, so.
Something else that I could consider doing would be if you communicate with Canterbury Shaker Village and you guys are willing to install a siphon system and willing to maintain and keep it operating, that certainly is the same cost as buying the dam and rehabilitating it. And if that then for the short term lowers that water body enough to not put that stress on the dam, that particularly buys everyone time. And so, I don't have an idea really. Unfortunately, about engineering analysis, it's really kind of hard to say, do you need four six inches or 12 six inch? You know, I'm not really sure what the answer is. My boss might agree to let me figure that out if you guys were serious about trying to do that as a means to help for the short term. But once again, it's going to be solved. You'd have to figure out, whoever's going to solve, you have to figure out access across either my federally impound property.
But I think you've indicated that would be okay. Yes, access.
To some extent, there might be complications in that. We have to, if we're going to bring heavy equipment over water pipes, water lines, there's low wires, there's clearances.
Okay, yeah, I get it, right, yeah.
But the town would also only consider that if Shaker Village wasn't considering it.
But absolutely, would I be cooperative, yes.
Yeah, and that's, we could talk.
Yeah, kind of. Likewise cooperative here.
Obviously.
And he's on the other end.
Okay.
I'm on, you know, I'm on one side, he's on the other.
We have our conversations.
Actually, his property I think goes all the way behind it. Right, does it?
What?
Your property goes like all the way behind it.
Yeah.
Completely.
Completely, yeah.
Yeah, you've got a lot of acreage there.
I just want to say.
I don't know if there's any old skid roads back there or anything.
There's no reason for us to believe they're not going to test this. Like they're not, they're not going to just say it's ours.
Yeah, understood.
And I apologize, we didn't go looking for abutters because we told them, you need to reach out to abutters. This is, and we didn't hear anything and we didn't realize that this, it would come to this.
Sorry, have you contacted them recently?
This was in 2020, it sounds like 2022, yeah, when we sat with them and they sat with us and I wouldn't say it was more kind of a, I don't want to say threatening, like scared threatening, but like, we're going to breach it, we're not, and there's no reason for us to think that they're going to say this is our dam and we're going to fix it.
The latest communication from the board of directors as of last week was that they are contesting ownership.
However, it could be, just like I knew with the trees, that if you, if you guys were willing to consider siphons, it could be very much that if you ask them if you can do it, that they might say, yes, we're not saying we own the dam. But then that tide of, you know, I'm completely on my lawyer, maybe that gives enough, you know, of a justification that you guys are not going to be in, you know, an issue with doing so. Obviously, if you guys do get interested in that, needs to be coordination and communication with us. In the long run, they'll probably have to be emergency weapons permit because of the discharge and other things. So, but those things are all doable and they're doable in a fashion that they shouldn't slow anything down. Getting pipe out to the dam, as both of them talked about, it's going to pose a little bit of a challenge. Just because you really can't just drive up there. And you certainly do not want to drive on top of the dam. I'm going to tell you that right now. You don't know what's going on inside of it, but certainly applying a pickup truck on top of it is not a good idea.
Does not sound, not, even I know that and I don't know a damn thing about dams.
So.
Lisa? Thank you, I'm sorry, did you mention that sort of the siphoning option is a temporary to slow them?
Is to reduce the pressure of internal erosion going on.
So did you say you were go, how are we finding out what that costs and what that is involved? Or you're waiting for, did you offer to work with us to, to tell us how to do that?
If my boss approves it, I can do some calculations to give you an idea how much of a siphon system you would need. Whether you would need four six inch siphons or 12 six inch siphons. I could do the calculations and do that. Then someone else would have to take that information and try to figure out what the pricing of the materials and then installation would be.
I'm just bringing this up because it, it sounds like we're in a fight over ownership for a while, so nothing's really going to happen. In the meantime, there might be, you asked the question Scott, what can we do in the short run? Well, we don't know who's going to, we don't know how much a siphon costs or who's going to pay for it and do it. But you're offering potentially, if your boss says it's okay, to give us some initial idea. I mean, it seems like it's at least some more information as a, I mean, are we waiting for Rome to burn here? In litigation for you? I mean, you had mentioned that might be something and obviously we don't know who owns it and who would pay for it if it's a temporary, but if we're going to get some free consulting from the state, thank you very much. If the, if the selectmen feel it's useful.
I, I agree in that, at least in your, your suggestion, which is where I was trying to go, you're a little more eloquent. It's a lot easier to come up with a solution into, on the front side as opposed to when the dam breaches and that none of this matters. And we don't have, have those options. I would rather have an option or at least something that we can work from. And I don't know how to generate that process and do this, is it something that has to be a motion? Is it something that has to come from the town, something that has to come from the board? But I would like to see that process go and you said it very well.
Does that make sense to you to at least investigate the cause?
I think.
Yeah, Jim, if you would, please.
I would think, yeah, absolutely.
I'll ask my boss and I'll go ahead and work on that relatively quickly. Just as a general idea for what we're talking about, probably either 12 PVC pipes, you know, six or eight or 10 inches, something that's relatively commonly available. And someone's going to have to figure out what the length is to get down deep enough into the pond, come back up over the top and go down the other side. And then you have to have some mechanism for getting that siphon action started. Most of the time, it's you put some kind of a port on the top that you can, you know, unscrew a plug and you put a plug in the bottom, you fill the whole thing with water, so that then when you screw on the top again and then release the blood in the bottom, it starts your siphon action.
Understood.
Just like doing fish type.
But yeah. I've seen fancier ones that involve vacuum lines and other stuff too, all kinds of ways. It's a siphon, so it's not really rocket science exactly, right? But then once again, they're finicky and so there's going to be, someone's going to have to keep an eye and make sure they're continuing to work. And someone's going to have to potentially be out there to re-prime them. And so that probably involves some kind of small pump, two pumps, fill them up or whatever. So I mean, once again, this is all doable. And PVC pipe and that diameter, you know, for the leaks involved isn't going to be cheap, but it's also not, you know, completely outrageously expensive.
Understood, so typically in your experience, how often does it need to be monitored? Is it daily?
You should probably keep an eye on it daily, though I suspect you have some abutters here that would be happy to do that for you.
That's kind of what I'm thinking.
Sorry guys.
I'm sure they'd be happy to check out. So I, I certainly see this as a solution to bias all the time, you know, while we explore some of the other things.
And from the state's side, we're going to recommend that you seek Canterbury Shaker Village's permission to do this. If you guys do decide to do this, but you guys with your legal counsel are going to have to figure out maybe exactly what that means or doesn't mean, depending on their response. I would be glad to email you all the references from RSA's relative to towns taking over dams. And I don't recall if there's anything relative to stepping in to try to do a short-term fix. There could be, these are RSA's and I'm not sure have been applied in the past hundred years. So it could be a little bit interesting for all of us, but we'll have a look at it and I'll share that information.
They're still, the problem is still good.
They're still awesome.
There's still, and, and in the meantime, while all of this might be going on and your research and your communication, they're still going to get an administrative order from DES.
Because once again, DES is considering them the owner and based on our information, we believe they are the owner.
Yeah, and assuming your boss says yes and allows you to do this, can that be communicated to all the people that have asked?
Absolutely, yeah.
Just so it'll be transparent.
Yes, so I mean, once again, I guess all of you, please send me an email and also some kind of an email list to try to make sure everyone is aware of what's going on. Once again, I was already sharing with Jonas anyway and with Mike and so on, but I'd like to obviously include the town and make sure we're all on the same page with all this communication.
Understood, thank you. Lisa?
Just to, sorry, just to make sure it's clear, I mean, this idea of a shorter term solution, I mean, this should be presented to Canterbury Village too, because I mean, that's one of their options.
Correct, by understanding they're already discussing that.
Right, so I mean, the administrative order, I mean, this is something, you know, from the other side, there's this fight about ownership. From a science perspective, it would be nice to hear from DES what the short-term solution is without implying that that has to come from us versus Shaker Village versus the town. There's very complicated things about who does what and it's very nice to hear like the science from you guys of that this is a shorter term solution. The town, the abutters, Sherwood Forest and the rest of the abutters, Shaker Village, we can all fight about who's responsible. But it's nice to hear from the state, not only, you know, what the safety issues are and the administrative order, but that there are some short-term options to undertake. Because what I don't like is this idea that they're out there fighting with you about ownership and then it's all on us to do the short-term solution. There is a problem that's about the science and who it affects. And it would really be helpful to hear from the state as you weigh in on this science of the problems that all sides, the one who's not claiming ownership, the town who doesn't want ownership, the abutters who don't want to pay for it, we're all getting the same information, not based on where they sit.
And I'm not completely clear on what you mean by science. I mean, what I have offered to do is to perform some hydraulic calculations to appropriately size the amount of discharge in siphons. I mean, I've been evaluating anything beyond that. Of course, it's still under my boss's approval because it's outside of our normal scope of what we do. It's just like anything, right? The property owner is responsible. You're responsible for your house, you're responsible for your car. I mean, that's, this isn't any different with the dam. Obviously, it's complicated by the fact that Canterbury Shaker Village is arguing that they don't own it. And then that turns into a legal battle with lawyers at the court. That's been, kind of been pending for a while since they contested. The Administrative Order Act should provide a much quicker way to get that resolved and get that in front of the court for a court to make a decision on that.
But doesn't that give them the opportunity to just breach the dike and say, we're done?
If they're the owner of the dam, they can choose to remove the dam with the proper permission, absolutely. But I'm sure that they're going to contact, I mean.
I don't see why they wouldn't do it if they don't want responsibility and have no, no, no horse in the race, why they wouldn't do that. That's why I think we have to be proactive as a group because then we have no control over what goes on whatsoever. I mean, granted, we want them to take responsibility and we want them to pay. I'm in business, I don't want to take responsibility and I don't want to pay. I can't see why they would want to do that. I think we have to be on the front side of this, that's just, and if I'm wrong, that's wonderful. But I don't see any way that they're going to come up with money to do this, they would have already done it before.
And for what it's worth, they've had the option of removing the stand for decades and have never considered it, by no means. But of course, this is a different circumstance because the condition of the dam is, has decreased and there's no more responsibility on it, so.
Seems like we have a lot of moving pieces in all directions and we can be proactive and your mechanism is still going to have to go along. And we've got a bit more discussion to do, but I think we're.
But if anyone, you know, can install a siphon, that that buys a lot of time or much more time to deal with anything. In the letter we sent them, we asked them to lower the pond, we need to tell them how to do it. But from a realistic standpoint, there's three ways to lower the pond. You can do a siphon, you can do a pump, which means you have to keep the fuel lit, so that's certainly a good long-term solution. Siphons, once you get running or gravity, right, so they're free, or it's a breach. There's really no other way to lower the dam, those are the only three options.
And if they're already discussing siphons, maybe there's a hope that they may choose to do that.
Correct, and once again, I haven't had any conversation with anyone on the board and we have received no direct response from Canterbury Shaker Village to our letter or to anything else.
Shaker Village is sort of leaderless and has been for a while.
Correct, they don't have an executive director, so I'm sure that makes it much more challenging. But my guess is that this would be a board decision regardless of the fact of whether they had or didn't have an executive director. Because I think this would be above their pay.
So do we, do we have a shortlist of what's actually going to happen? The abutters and people are going to contact Shaker Village, Tom Mufflato? You're going to give us information about the siphon?
Assuming the information.
So assuming you get, assuming you get permission and the executive orders, I mean, the orders going out.
I think one thing my boss is going to want to know is if you guys are truly seriously considering stepping in and trying to install siphons yourself before you get what we do.
I think that's, that's something we're going to have to discuss.
Okay, I understand, and I understand it's a little bit of a circular in there because obviously for your decision, the cost is part of it. And the cost of four six inch siphons is obviously significantly different from 12 six inch siphons.
I want to respond to your question, they're, they're not going to respond to Bob Rogowski asking to put siphons in. They might show a little more respect if it comes from the town or the selectmen. I'd certainly be involved with going, but if three or four abutters go to talk to them, it's not the same as the town.
Oh, absolutely not, but I would think the more, the merrier.
No, that's why we're here.
Weighing in on the issue, abutters and town and DES is a pretty powerful combination, I would hope.
Well, maybe if you were to issue a, a letter at some point after we got this, we would certainly support and sign on in some form of a petition. It's just I think the higher, the higher up the food chain, the better, the more effective we'll have, that's all I'm asking.
Maybe ask for a meeting and we'll all show up and.
Yeah, well, that's what is, you're on the same page. Do they have a meeting, is it something that the, the select group could, could attend? And we come like we did to this meeting as well? Or even ask for the ability to have that communication as opposed to wait, to wait? I mean, I know I'm sensitive about this, but I moved here because of what's here.
I've been on there 65 years, all my memory, my whole life.
I'm not sure I caught your name, I am sorry.
Mike Pennard.
Mike Pennard.
I was born in May and we were camping there in August, Swadlin.
And once again, the state wants to do whatever we can do to facilitate some kind of a solution to this. That's what we do. I, what we decided to do with my job is because we're the Department of Environmental Services. Most states is environmental protection. There's a difference in those two words. And I have worked with many challenging situations over my time with the dam bureau to find resolutions. Sometimes it's successful, sometimes it isn't. But we certainly don't want to step in and be the big bad state. That's the last thing we want to do, I give it to you.
What does the select work look about, whether concerned from us to Canterbury, Shaker Village?
I, I guess I'm, I'm good with that. I'd like some time to think about it, I mean, this is the first thing I've really heard. I don't want to just say, we'll step in and take it over, because I don't, I'm not comfortable with that.
Can we put that on tomorrow work session for tomorrow?
It's a lot to digest.
It is a lot.
I only have one thing to add to this. When they did transfer the funds to the developer, the Oaklairs, back in the 50s, their whole intent was that it was property on a pond with private roads in a private community. And that that premise set back in the 50s. So at that point, they set this up. They did it, the Shaker Village did this. And now they're trying to just step away with no compensation or what, or even an attempt to remediate? I don't think they could get any more negligent.
Unfortunately, there was another complexity there, it was the Shakers who solved it, not Shaker Village.
That's correct.
Lisa, did you have something?
Yeah, I'd like to comment, I, obviously the issue of town ownership is a huge issue that you were way far from being even prepared to think about. But I guess I would implore, perhaps there is, from the selectmen's perspective, at least some type of pronouncement in the same way that you're encouraging DES to help and your boss is hopefully going to say yes because of the selectmen care. And I know you want that, the hook on ownership because that's what the law says. We're not, I know, no one's anywhere there. But I think it's pretty easy to say that there's a consensus that this is an important part of the value of the community and Shaker Village and Sherwood Forest and Life or Pond and encouraging people to work together to find both short-term and permanent solutions to save. You know, and I don't, I'm just, I think that's an easy thing to behave and perhaps if, if you need a letter for your boss and whatever to do things, and I understand they would.
They'll take my word, and I don't think it'll be a problem, I just can't.
Understood, we get it, yeah, we all work for somebody.
Once again, we've been in a situation, similar situation, it's not this exact one. And helping out, we're not normally having a real issue with to a point. Obviously, we're not going to send our construction crew out here and fix this thing. That's a different thing. But me spending a few hours doing some calculations on something that I already have a lot of it done anyway, it's not a big ask. So I don't think it'll be a problem from the beginning.
And I think Lisa, you could understand that of an issue that is this important, that we want to be careful and consider it with our wording and not just say, oh yeah, we're going to, you know, whatever. Especially since we've gotten a lot more information tonight about the whole issue. And, but time being of the essence, can we add this to our conversations tomorrow at our work session?
I appreciate that, it's important, but that's, that's all we're adding.
Okay, well.
All right, Jim, thank you.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Please contact me with any questions or anything we can, we can do.
We will.
And if you guys would also please, if you have further public meetings on these, on this, or, you know, please make sure I'm invited as well. I found out on this one, I'm here, but you know, DES wasn't there. You know, it's because of this communication, right, those are all the rights.
Well, we're very glad you're here and I will take your card now, I changed my mind.
And folks, thank you all for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for all you do for us.
Appreciate it.
Always nice to talk to somebody.
Thank you.
Well, and that's one of the reasons why my boss would be coming, because this is easy, this is obviously, there's a lot of passion about this on the tree.
Of course.
It's easy to get a lot of this information.
You know, I'm really interested to hear you say the difference between environmental services and environmental protection.
That's my, that's my personal, personal thing, but Bob Scott's going to back up on that too. I mean, you know, when we have to be the big bad state, we have to deal with that. I mean, you know, we have to be the big bad state and we have to deal with that. But we really try to work with everyone involved with the situation and figure out a resolution that works for everybody, you know, with all the lawyers.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you.
Certainly.
All right. So are we back to signing some stuff?
No, we got the actusrum.
Okay. Hi, folks.
Hi.
I'm forward.
Oh, gosh, thank you. So much. This is in the house.
So that's the parcel.
All right. I already looked at this.
Okay, good.
Hold on. Did you say, do you want to? Have you seen this?
Yeah, we've seen this thing before.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you want this down?
Sure. Yeah, okay.
Oh, this is the, this comes with it. Those are the details.
Okay. All right. So I'll keep this all together.
So the actusrum came to us two years ago, about?
I think it was July 22nd.
Okay. Well, yeah, just about two years. So with an offer for a piece of property, you know, property before you. Kind of went back and forth. There was some issues with the title or the deed. The offer kind of languished, kind of, we didn't, nothing happened with it. And then recently, they contacted us and would like to continue the negotiations on this piece of property.
It didn't, it didn't languish. We reached out, because of the title issue, you know, we reached out to a title company that, you know, do a little research and they kind of threw their hands up and went, no, we don't want to touch this. But then we now got a really...
There's no way you can get a clear title from a company with the way that it is paid for back taxes. So when we took it to the title company, the lawyer basically called me and said, can't you do the title on this because it wasn't deed originally, so this is a lot of research that needs to be done. So that's why it's taken us a little while. We've actually contacted a real estate lawyer that specializes in this. And we have a whole process that we need to go through. It's very costly to do, but it is very, it is very possible to do. So basically, what we need to do is a quiet title petition to the court. And then that will open up Pandora's Box, if you will, and we do all the research behind this. The real estate lawyer does that with a deed abstractor. We've gone back into the 70s and done a bunch of research, so...
So that first title company, they started reading the deeds and it didn't match the description of the land. And that's where they kind of went, wait a second, this doesn't jive. So that's why they wouldn't, well, they would pursue, but that it was going to cost a lot of money. And so that's why we ended up and that's why we now have this real estate lawyer that thinks she can maybe do some research for us. So that's why we're here.
Ultimately, we're looking at somewhere near an $10,000 to $15,000 cost for us to be able to get this. And again, it's still a gamble on our part. We're willing to take that gamble based on what we've done talking to our real estate lawyer.
Okay.
And how does this jive with anything that town council might say?
So this is a, yeah, so the town took this back $2,000, I think it was, for overdue taxes, back taxes, unpaid taxes. We've communicated with town council. Their opinion is that once the town takes it, it clears the title, but we have competing opinions from legal councils, from the actusrum and from the town council. I don't, you know, I'm not an attorney. I just get the message from our town council. I know that our assessor felt that that, that she didn't feel that that was true either result. But...
That she didn't feel that once the town took it, that it cleared it?
That it cleared it. That was something that she didn't think was true to her. But again, we're not...
The motines that were supposedly the owners have said they don't own it.
Right, right. So...
So it's very, very...
Yeah, it's a very complicated issue. The other part of this is it's a non-conforming lot, but it is a lot of record. As you can see from the plan there, a lot of this wet. There's, there's even thought that it may not even be a buildable lot. If it was sold as a, as a lot, which the town could do, that whether it's buildable, could you put a house on it, doesn't have enough land with it that you might be able to septic system it well. So there's those questions too. But I think the actusrum, you guys are interested in possibly merging it or doing something with it? You weren't sure what you were going to do with it?
We want to leave it as a separate lot. We are a butter on two different lots that are buttered. And literally, when we talked about this being wet, to God's honest, if I had videos on my phone of wood ducks flying in the night, but it's that much. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is that I think where the deed gets very muddy is when you researched this and it goes back, it was originally in with another lot, there's two lots on the deed. That's where it gets really muddy. We think we figured it out, but it's still not real obvious where it goes. That's why the deed abstractor really needs to spend the time researching this. We've taken it back into the 70s, but I think it's going to have to go further than that. It will take talking to the previous owners, having them sign off. So there's a lot of legal work that needs to go into it. And I think the title company said that, you know, as far as a building lot at this point, if anybody's going to get a loan on it, there's no way to get a loan on it because of the money district it has.
And if it's, and if it's not actually, well, we don't know. I don't know at this point if how buildable it is. Why do you want to keep it as a separate lot as opposed to joining it with property you already own that abuts it?
In any land that we've ever purchased over the years, whether it be in business, personal stuff, whatever, my lawyers have always told me to keep something individual anytime you can because you can't recreate that lot line again. But once you take that lot line away, it becomes part of something else. So it's not a buildable lot at that point. And certainly, Ken's point, is it buildable?
Is it buildable now?
It's 1.6 acres. I think it's buildable. We're not buying it potentially as a building lot right now, but we would like to leave it as individual. It certainly doesn't have as much value in the long run if we make it part of our property. It really doesn't give us a whole lot of value because it's wet and you really can't use it. The front section that's against back of this hill road, there's probably a half, maybe 0.6 acres there that is high and dry, that is potential to be, I think it'd be similar to one of the lots in Sherwood Forest. It'd be that type of potential lot where they're able to put businesses in there on the 0.25 acre lots. If people get kind of...
So if it's not viable really as a, as a, as a big buildable lot and you don't really want to build on it, why keeping it separate? I still don't understand the value of keeping it separate. Does it make it easier to buy it, to have, to have the title part of it not matter if you buy it and merge it?
It would give us better value down the road if it were still separate as a building lot, potential building lot than it is if it merges with something else. If it merges with something else, there's really, it's not that much usable land.
Even with the cost of the search for the title, which, you know, $15,000, it still makes it more valuable to keep it separate?
Other questions? So what's the offer on this parcel?
So we originally, I talked about this a couple of years ago, and what we kind of talked about before we found the money back of it, if you will, was that the town's assessed value of it was $39,000. And again, with our legal fees and a little bit of a chance that we'll undertake, we'd like to offer the town $24,000. That gives us the $15,000 potentially that we may have to spend on legal fees to get it cleared.
I understand. So $24,000?
I guess I'd rather not step too far in front of the board on these things, so I'll be careful.
Well, I'm just, I'm curious. To me, a sticking point is the difference of opinion, the two legal councils. I don't know how to think about that. You're, you know, there's real estate, you know, the people that you've hired to search for the title, which is a cost you're willing, which, which you would like to have cleared up. But if our town's legal council says it's not a problem, I don't know how to make those two jive. I don't know how to weigh which one might actually be the truth of the matter. Do you, do you need to spend this $10,000 to $15,000 to get that title clear if we have a reputable counsel who says it doesn't need to be? I don't know how to think about that. So I don't know if I believe that giving that kind of discount on the land is, is worth it if it's money that doesn't have to be spent? And again, I'm not saying I believe that, but I don't know how to think about that because there are two different opinions. And again, if we have, if we trust our counsel...
Right. And we're, we're looking at this as an investment.
Yeah.
Right. So everything you buy, your properties, whatever, down the road, it's an investment to you, right? Your children might do something different with it. So for us, we have to look at this as beyond just the here and now, right? The what we have for property right now, what, what it's worth. For us to just take that land and absorb it into another lot is, why, why would we want to come out and pay $24,000 or even $39,000 for 1.6 acres of wet? If it's valuable as a possible building lot, that makes it more attractive to us to purchase. Does that make more sense?
Oh, no, it doesn't.
In order for it to be a building lot, you kind of need the title to be clear. Because again, down the road, you never know what's going to happen and somebody might need, he might die, I might need to sell it to live on, right? The money. So you just don't want to lock yourself into saying, okay, we're just going to do this and it's just going to be another piece of land. At that point, the value of the land to us is really a lot less than the $24,000 even. You know, it's wet and really wet in the back. And then there's a piece near the road where our property abuts it, it's wet. So even just to access it or use it for anything we're doing.
All right. No, I understand that, but I'm just, what I can't, what I have difficulty knowing how to think about is, is the difference of legal opinion.
I've had a very reputable surveyor from town Canterbury that's looked at this for me. He's assured me that it needs to be researched further back. It's very muddy. And I've also had two different real estate lawyers look at it. I've got one real estate lawyer that I'm going to go with that's going to help me with it. I've had two different real estate lawyers look at it. Plus, we had absolute title conquered. We've used them for other properties that we've closed on. And that lawyer was very adamant that once they got back into the deeds and it was two properties in there, the fact that the previous owner said they didn't own it, that there's a lot of mud in the backside that needs to be cleared.
How is it a previous owner who says they didn't own it? It sounds like...
I wish Cheryl was here because Cheryl could tell you the background. She was the one that was actually the tax collector of the town when it got taken. Mr. Moulton was the gentleman that eventually owned it and he said that he didn't own it and he wasn't okay to tax us on it because it wasn't his property. So it's very interesting. There's a lot of history with this particular piece. And again, I think for us, we're comfortable with a quiet title petition that has to go through the court with a real estate lawyer and using the deed abstractor to do the research behind it. And it's still a petition that has to go to the court. The court can still deny it at that point. We're petitioning them by using the, going to the previous owner, having him sign up. There's a lot of work that has to be done to get it.
And if the petition is denied, then what happens?
Well, as I told you, we're taking a risk. There's risk involved in this. It's not, it's not cut and dry. There's a lot of research that has to be done.
And that's your $10,000 to $15,000 of research?
Yeah.
But do you know what happens if they, if they, if they petition, just out of curiosity, if the petition is denied, what's your next step?
The title wouldn't be clear at that point, so you wouldn't ever be able to get a loan. The problem is you can't get a loan on the property. So if you ever built a house on it, you would never be able to get a loan on it because of the, without it being clear to the backside. If we do this quiet title petition with our lawyer and all the background, at least we double the deed abstractor, it will hopefully clear and everything will be good. We've gone back far enough into the 70s that we're, we're fairly confident that we could go a little further back and do everything. Again, the problem is there's two deeds, I'm sorry, two pieces of property on the same deed and that's where it gets really sticky back in the 70s.
Not only an odd-shaped piece of land, but an odd history.
Right. And those two, if you look at that deed, those two tracts of land are not abutted. So I'm not sure where that got, when they go back. It'll be interesting, the research, I'll have to see when it became attached to this other property. But like a title, the absolute title company said the description didn't match the size, like the dimensions of it. So it's a risk.
Right now, we're not making any taxes on it.
Right.
Correct.
Right?
And I think that was the original objective, was to try to get a hack on the tax record again, which we're going to do.
My theory always is settle in the middle somewhere. I'd entertain 29 to see if you're serious and if you are, then I'd be comfortable with that. But I don't know about my other two board members.
I think I'm willing to be swayed. I think to have, you want to clear the title. I think it seems, it seems like it would be a good thing to have a very clear title as opposed to, by people who do this a lot, as opposed to a, a, a thought that because the town owns it, the title is clear. That seems a little shallow to me. A little, you know, it seems like the research that you're willing to do is probably a good thing in the long run. And I also think it's a good thing to have it back on the tax maps. What, what, what makes it value, what that puts as far as value? What do we, I don't, I don't quite know how to assign a value, but you're saying, what can't you say, you thought 29?
They're talking $10,000 to $15,000. If I take the low end of that and I take it off of 39, it takes it down to 29.
Yeah.
Seems reasonable.
I believe it does too.
The other thing that I do want to mention is that a clean deed basically just shows that the tax collector paid taxes. It doesn't clear it behind it. Let me show it a little clearer. I think Ken will agree on that as well. It's when you take it back, it doesn't clear everything behind, it just takes it from that person. Somebody could still come back down the road and say, oh, that was my heir's, you know, property. There's still potential of that. Quickly, it does not clear. It just shows you that the town took it for back taxes and at this point, nobody's disputing that. I think Mr. Moulton's not disputing it. But who knows? Maybe Mr. Moulton wasn't the owner and there's an heir back for him. I mean, that's certainly grasping at straws, but there is a potential.
But that's another risk you're also willing to take and react. It seems like you're bearing a lot of the risk, so.
Yeah, which would be a $10,000 reduction in the value.
I, I think it sounds reasonable.
What say you?
You're the boss, I guess.
And I, and do we need an answer right now? If you want to...
Want to think about it?
Consider it.
Okay. All right. We can, yeah, when you're ready, one way or the other.
Well, I think that the biggest thing for us is that we spent almost two years researching this and literally having to do different lawyers, deed abstractors, call people. We want to make sure that, you know, when you guys agree with this, whatever, Ken and I can continue to talk about it. If it's, you know, agreeable to everybody, we'd like to get things kind of...
Understood.
I don't want to drag on another couple of years.
No.
You know, the research needs to get started on it, so.
Given our, our, I guess, past practice, I would say that there would be some kind of time limit set on this.
Yeah.
You know, whether it's.
I agree.
A week, two weeks, whatever.
Yeah.
And that you won't entertain any other offers until it is decided.
And do we need to make an official letter, like an offer letter, or have, how?
No, I think this, this.
No.
This constitutes an official offer. If that's what you're willing to take, the board agrees and then, then see what the actions come out of.
Can you give us a decision in two weeks?
Yeah, when is the first Monday of May would be the next elections meeting? Am I doing that right?
Yeah.
The sixth, I think is the first.
Yes.
Say sixth is the year.
Is that fair?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And then, Ken, I'm not familiar, would it be a purchase and sales at that point?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you would sign that or does the board sign it?
We do.
Okay, so we come to that meeting at that point. Okay. So let's use that May sixth as a.
That sounds like a good plan to me.
Kind of handshake thing and we'll let you guys know for sure, but.
Perfect.
That sounds reasonable.
And, and do you, do you want us to bring a purchase and sales, however, if you want to do, you guys want?
Oh, we'll, we'll, we'll write it up. Yeah. If you, if you, you're going to have to give me a little.
Yeah.
Couple days' notice.
Yeah, well, heads up FYI.
Right. Yeah. And that way we could do everything that night.
Yeah, I'll give you at least five days on the subject. So by the first of May, I'll let you know, Ken and Moulton will come see you folks.
That's a good plan.
Six, seven meeting, we'll get on the agenda.
Thank you.
That's good. Thank you.
Good night.
Greg, next?
Yep.
Six thirty, it must be.
Sorry.
Yeah, running long again.
No, it's, uh, daylight savings, dying in the first.
Hello again.
Hello, Greg.
Uh, let's see, a couple things I want to go. First, right to know. I'm planning on asking some of our members who are knowledgeable on this to talk to our board about right to know law. Trying to think of what questions would come up.
Isn't there a seminar coming up?
I'm going to it.
Where is it?
Tomorrow.
Right. Well, we have been struggling every meeting to get people to sign up for seminars and we have three people signed up, but not for that one. So the question I think people will ask is that I get all my planning board email on my personal phone and on my personal computer and I also get my tax returns and my financial records and my argument with my sister-in-law and how does that stuff get separated?
As long as. As long as you are using your official town email address to conduct town business, um, again, I, we've gone round and round on this with our attorneys and the NHMA attorneys. I think there's been a few significantly high politicians that have, have set significantly high offices that have gone through this. But we have been advised that as long as they're using our official town email, then that is what is discoverable.
None of our board members have official town emails.
And again, that's. Then, then if you are using a private email to conduct town business, that is discoverable. If you are using a private email to conduct town business, my guess is, and again, I'm not an attorney, but my guess is that that email along with all the other emails that may be associated with that address would be discoverable. Our town council, NHMA, all advise against using personal email to conduct town business.
All right, while we, all of our members are using their personal emails on the, on the roster.
Then I would suggest they sign.
How do they, what's the process for getting, has it many people?
They can be notified of meetings, um, using their, you know, if, if it comes from a public town email, then they can be notified of meetings, but you really shouldn't be conducting business that way with a private email address.
Obviously it's schedules and heads up, look at this document because it's going to be discussed.
I, I don't know.
It comes from, it comes from the Canterbury Planning Board email, but it goes to all the private addresses. So I think I should try to inquire of maybe municipal association and our town council also about how to answer this question. You know, health records and everything, you know? And it's not that it's going to get dragged in, but how does it get separated and what the cost of, I mean, I've got two gigs of stuff on my computer, how does it all get sorted out? You know, and I'm sure that's not unusual for, for your computer or whatever.
Or do you have a town email address as chairman?
I do, but I've also, I don't, I have never used my town email address. I use the Canterbury Planning Board address for everything, but then when it comes to me, it comes through an email I sent called PD Chair O three two two four Gmail to try to separate it. But in practice, even, you know, most people have at least one or two email addresses and as soon as you've got a populated return address, you know, all of a sudden your other address is tied into this email chain and stuff. It's a, it's a, it's a mess. I'll, I'll talk to people, uh, to the legal and see if I can get us some direction on how to do it.
And is there a way to get more of your members or to encourage them to come to the right to know seminar? It was free to sign up.
We've been pushing, we've been pushing pretty hard on people to go to. Rich has taken the, there's the lunchtime, the free lunchtime ones and Rich has taken that one and they did touch on, but we keep sending out around the emails and talk about it in every meeting and hopefully, now we have, next item, we have two new alternates, Jonas Sandborn from Sherwood Forest and Brendan O'Donnell, who was on the board before. I think it's really encouraging and we're, I'm hoping the board will agree on trying to include alternates more in the discussions as is recommended in the New Hampshire Planning Board Handbook. But I think I'm really hopeful that we'll see some opportunities for succession because we're not going to run again.
How many more, how many more alternates can you have?
We can have one more. So now we have four. Our board is large, so with six on the board, the select board rep and four alternates, we've got eleven people that we're trying to, it's the, so I am discouraging adding more alternates until we see how the participation of the, of the group. One thing I think was important is we've seen alternates who are not participating, not encouraged to participate. I think it's important, the problem with our board is that we're not asking alternates to participate enough, so then they don't feel engaged, they don't feel invested, they stop coming to meetings. It's not a, to have alternates engaged and then they're ready to step up if they need to, if we need, if we lose somebody or, I've been having to refuse from recent events. I don't know how many of you've got, several regional planning, perfect deeds or maps registered with the registering deed. It's really, it's a beautiful thing, actually. It's before they all went digital and it's signed by Jim Bassett, signed by Cheryl Gordon and a surveyor and it's registered. We've been talking before about what is our official map that we, because we're supposed to refer to the official map that's mentioned many times in RSA's and in RX. Central Regional Planning says this is as good as an official map as we're ever going to get. It doesn't mean it's hundred percent accurate. We have a couple, there's a couple zoning things, they're over by exit of eighteen, there's a little bit of land that changed. The new central historic district is a small change. Those are all being incorporated into the new maps that are being done for the master plan, which are actually, as you look back on it, they are actually based on this map. And an additional thing is that you're having a certain regional planning work with the highway department here means that we're getting the, they're also getting the input from the highway department aside, aside on all the, all the road work going on. So I think by the end of June, when we have a final master plan with those maps, then maybe it's time to take that map and adopt that as the official map, which all it would take is for Sam to sign it, for that to happen.
Do, do we need an official map in the interim or can we just wait to the one that's got the corrections already?
Uh, I think these are very valuable. I have one copy that I'm keeping for the planning board. They put, I asked them for two more, which might be helpful for Mandy and Joel, I would think, but.
We have the one on the wall in the success offices that.
It's the same as this?
Same.
Exactly the same.
Uh, nobody can guarantee.
I, I would hazard a guess that it's ninety-nine point nine percent the same.
There's a Barnett, Barnett Road, I think.
There may be a spelling error or a spelling difference or something like that, but the designation of the roads are the same.
Okay. And that's technically at this moment, our official map?
That is the official map.
Okay. And then we will get a new official map when the master plan is complete and those extra changes and then Sam will sign it and we will have a new official map in June?
If that's what you folks want to happen, that's a, yes, that's, uh, it's, uh, our planning board's job is to work with the master plan and get the master plan as accurate as we can possibly get it for the master plan. I mean, we all know that we should have an official map that we can refer to that is definitive. And that doesn't mean that something on this map can never be challenged by somebody who has a different opinion.
But if we've got an even more updated version coming in June, you think?
To the end of June, yes.
Seems reasonable to have Sam sign that one at the time and.
We should build it at historical society when that stuff, it's going to be an interesting piece.
Is that, and, and where are those particular maps that you're rolling up right now going?
I'm giving them to town. Who can then ask Joel and Mandy if they'd like to have them or their reference if they want.
And if somebody wanted to get one because we think it's a cool map they have for themselves, how would one do that?
Uh, well, you have any more Central Regional Planning will print for us for free, but it's a.
I would be, I would be willing to pay for my map.
It's been circulated by email, the PDF version, so you can send it to Staples and ask them to print it however big, on whatever stock you want.
And then you do pay for it.
Then I, then I'll take care of it. I mean, if you could get Central Regional Planning to print that for free, fine, but I will take care of that expense myself.
Last thing is road waiver, uh, the, Ken and I were talking about this, the road waiver, I guess a few years ago was changed from referencing the class five town road standard that is in the ordinance. So now there's like a difference between what the waiver says you have to do and what the ordinance says you have to do. So we in the planning board have discussed, and I think I mentioned this here, but you folks do about it. You were in the planning board, maybe I'm confusing your charming face with that.
A lot of people do that.
But we've talked about a standards below the class five road standard for driveways that serve maybe under a certain number of homes, under three homes, maybe, I'm just throwing a number on it, and under a thousand feet or what, then again, just putting a number on it. And that would be more the kind of standard that you have for on your road waiver now, a reasonably passable condition, I think the wording is, something like that. And then if, when it gets beyond that. So I think this is something that, I think it's kind of has to be cooperative because your, the select board gives the road waivers and the, the planning board, if you folks feel that something like that, and we're moving toward that with the definition of driveways versus roads, uh, so that might be a way to define it so that it doesn't become amorphous and well, I can, my road would be bigger than their road or can't be bigger as big as their road or whatever. So I guess I'd ask if that's something that I should be working with the board on, possibly looking at in ordinance sort of change. Actually, it's mostly in regulation change.
Yeah. I mean, I think certainly from my standpoint, I'm interested in access for fire apparatus would be your worst case scenario that I can envision.
Right.
Three, three fire trucks on a. Or more, depending on what's going on. Right.
So you, you're worried that if it's something is a driveway and it's got a certain dimension that even if it's called a driveway, you still have to get trucks down it?
Correct.
So that would tend to go back to including the class five town standard in the road waiver permit rather than the reasonably passable condition. So that's something that is up to you guys, it's not up to, up to the planning board.
Yeah. I mean, certainly I'd like to have a road agent weigh in as well. But you know, modern fire apparatus, you're looking at twenty, twenty-five tons possibly.
As soon as you're off that edge, you're.
Exactly. Don't know what the ability of the town is to dictate driveway.
Right.
Um, standards are. Yeah. I, I have to get a legal.
So that depends where you draw the line, where you define driveway versus the private road and.
Right now, the only, when you get, when you apply for driving from the town right now, the only, the, the road agent goes out to make sure that it is interfaces with the town road in a correct way. If there's a cover, if there's slight distance, things like that. I don't know that, we historically have never dictated to anybody how wide the driveway has to be.
Well, yeah, I was going to say, I don't think you could fit three fire trucks up my driveway, so I'm curious.
And I don't know what the town's ability is to do that. I'd like, that would be an even question.
Difference between one house and three houses, sorry.
Oh, I see, I see.
I've heard that Loudon has just forbidden shared driveways of any type. So I would think, I'm hearing that.
So this would be considered like a road?
Are problematic and that we shouldn't try and look for a solution to this with my, I, I don't know, honestly. I mean, I, I think it certainly bears further discussion, but, but not tonight.
Yes.
What was that wrote down off of? Is that Ed's Way, used to be Ed's Way and now it's, as you're coming up Baptist before the, by the school and the, on the way to the transfer station, off to the right. Used to be Ed's Way.
Ed's Way.
And now it's.
No, it's a private, still it, it's, well, it's, it's a driveway is what it is.
Well, that's what I mean, is that the kind of thing we're talking about?
Shared driveway.
That thing is a shared driveway?
It's a private road, it's a shared driveway.
Okay.
They put on their own sign as Ed's Way.
And they also have frontage on Baptist Road.
Correct.
They're not fronting on that road.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But that's the kind of access you're talking about, a, a thing, a passageway that goes back to three houses. So that's a shared driveway?
Right. And I think you were excited, have concerns about access there as much as you would anywhere else.
Yeah.
I have heard there were gunshots fired on the, about arguments on that specific driveway.
Really? I just heard about that.
Don't say good.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks. Take care of you.
Howard, no, Howard, did you want to, I didn't think you wanted to speak, you were just here.
I don't need to speak.
I have some updates.
Peanut gallery.
But, but, and Howard was going to be here in case he had a, an offer when, when there was discussion.
Okay.
So updates before signing?
Uh, I guess it was appointment slips and was there anything else, Howard? I can't, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just hoping to get three people approved for.
Correct.
The Canterbury Community Power Committee.
Yeah, and we have appointment slips for, for all of those.
Okay.
And we don't have to, do we have appointment slips for alternates who are applying for?
Not yet. You, once.
But we will.
Once, yeah, once they give us the names, we'll, we'll handle that.
Okay.
Are we discussing appointments to the CBA tonight or is that going to be?
You have all the appointment slips on your table tonight. It's up to you. If you, if you want to go down. Um, if you, if you wanna go down the list of, of signing, whatever.
You've got a film record of the whole meeting, right?
There's a little...
What are my chances of getting a piece of it that I missed that was in process?
We don't have...
Oh, no, no, they're not.
Yeah, all, all the appointment slips are not...
Will it be on YouTube tonight?
No.
Tomorrow? Tomorrow, tomorrow morning?
Tomorrow, by five.
All right, so, um, Agricultural Commission?
No way I can get it before that.
Ben Cohen?
No. Yes.
It's pretty big video.
Yes, for me as well?
I'm only, I'm only interested in the part that was being discussed when I came in. I came in halfway through because I thought it was gonna be later.
Yeah, it's about an hour long. You were here for a while.
Never mind.
Agriculture member, Eric Collins?
Yes.
Yes, for me?
Yeah.
All right, these must be the ones from Howard then. For the Community Power Committee member, Tom Franco?
Yes.
Yes, for me?
Yes.
Thank you, yep.
Oh, Carolina.
Just keep them together. All right, here's Tom Franco's.
Okay, Franco?
Community Power Committee member, Cheryl Franco?
Yes.
Uh, I'm assuming, uh, a couple, partner with Tom Franco?
We have one other couple that are both, that are members.
Okay, the Stonebreakers?
The Stonebreakers.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
It's not that that's a problem, I was just curious because sometimes they're not. Same last names. I can't tell you how many people have asked me which authority you are.
Yeah. Third person for Community Power Committee member, Ellen Scarpone?
Yes.
Yes, for me as well? Thank you.
We must add Conservation Commission to them.
Gee, that's what I had.
Oh, yeah. I reminded Kelly of that.
Yep.
Thank you. My first name.
All right, Conservation Commission member, Steve Soren?
Yes.
Yes, for me as well? All right, Conservation Commission alternate member, Charles, is it?
Cooney.
Thank you?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Cooney.
He's the one upside sideways, isn't he?
Yeah.
This is Marsh's old place.
Okay.
And, uh, and, although I only knew it when Baton was there.
All right, Energy Committee member, Claudia Leidinger?
Yes.
Yes. She said she was seven hours.
Conservation, conservation. And then, uh, Energy Committee member, Beth McLean?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, for me.
The other.
Exactly. That's energy, conservation. Proambulator, Mark Stevens?
Oh, yeah, I know that. Yeah.
And that appointment is for seven years versus three years. Uh, I talked to Mark. Uh, he take, it usually takes three to four years to do the whole preparation. He does, tries to do one border a year, and, um, so he felt that, that three-year term just wasn't, wasn't accurate, a good enough term, so he called seven years.
Okay.
Does he happen to have a shadow proambulator in the works?
I don't know.
I don't think he does.
No, that'd be a good idea.
Yep. All right, proambulator, all right, ZBA, Calvin Ty, three-year term.
Yes.
Yes, for me?
Yes, I'll give him.
All right, uh, ZBA, I thought Webb was getting off, but here's an appointment slip from that.
Not retiring.
Apparently not.
Yes.
Yes, for me?
He's been on there thirty years, hasn't he, with Joe?
I would have to walk out and go home.
He was on there when I was on it, back in the seventies.
All right, ZBA Lisa Carlson for three-year term.
Yes.
As alternate.
Not secretary, she doesn't need a, um...
Alternate.
Yeah.
Go. Final one, ZBA Joseph Hawa.
I do not know how to vote on that, I must confess.
I'm a no.
I'm a no as well.
Then my vote doesn't matter?
It does, it always does.
I, I don't know, actually, um, for, uh, I don't know if I can articulate why not, but, um, if I don't know, do I sign or do I not?
That's up to you.
I don't know that either.
That's why we're paying the big bucks.
I know, I know. I guess my, my curiosity would be, um, what happens to the board? How do they function without the chair, or what happens next?
The board elects a new chair.
Well, we need to fill the, we need to fill the hole.
Correct.
So we need, we just can't...
Until you appoint a new board member, they have an alternate which can sit as a board member to fill that vacancy. But you would have to appoint a full member or ask the alternate to step up to be a full member and then appoint another alternate. But until you decide who is gonna fill the vacancy in that board, then Mr. Hawa still retains, uh, his duties as a ZBA member.
We'll discuss this now?
Absolutely.
I have talked with Brandon Donald, Donald?
O'Donnell.
Yeah.
Yep.
And he has said that he would stand to the position.
Even though he just became an alternate to the planning board? Can you do both?
I'm not sure, I think you can, but, uh, that would be the question that needs to be answered.
I, I can check on that. There are, there are certain appointed and elected officials that can't hold the same...
Right.
Membership, but I can check on that. It's, it's, uh, pretty clear on that.
Okay.
It's an RSA and I'll just have, I would just have to look at that real quick.
Okay.
I think if I cannot, if I do not have a strong reason to sign, I will not sign. And if there is a reasonable, um, alternative, I don't know Brendan O'Donnell, but I know he has the experience that would be, um, his experience, um, would be, uh, appreciated and necessary. I don't know about his ability to chair a meeting, which is part of the...
Well, we wouldn't, we don't appoint a chair.
Oh, you would just appoint him to fill the...
Just to the board.
Yeah, the board elects a...
And then the board elects a chair. All right, then, if they, if they can, if they themselves can organize a satisfactory...
I'm sure they can.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So I guess the other question then is if the RSA prohibits, is Brendan willing to resign as an alternate to the planning board?
So I also talked with Kelly Stonebreaker, and she is willing to stand for the position.
Okay.
I think Brendan has demonstrated, at least to my satisfaction, because I've seen him perform on the planning board.
Mm-hmm.
And he's a thoughtful conciliator, is how I consider him. He managed to bring all the different things together, served us happy in the end.
I agree.
I think that's what a chairman's job should be.
Yeah.
Okay, I can get you by Wednesday, close the business, I'll give you the, uh, there I say on, if he can serve in both, both spots.
Okay.
Either one way, the other.
Yep, so, um...
Then we could draw up an appointment slip, if, if it can happen, I think it can, I think you can sit on both boards.
Okay.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, 'cause of the...
Yeah, 'cause sometimes if the planning board denies somebody, it goes appeal to the ZBA.
I think that would be a conflict of interest even if you are saying...
That might, uh, might cause a problem, so I'll check and let you know.
I'd actually asked him this question too when he searched it down at the Attorney General's office.
Okay.
It was a yes from them.
Okay, they can serve them both?
Well, the fact that he already searched it is a good sign. Okay.
Trying to get the fees crossed.
Yeah, good, good. Uh, all right, um, and how does this get communicated to the current chair?
Well, I'm thinking a phone call, probably.
From?
From me?
Okay.
A, a phone call or should it be a letter thanking him for his decade?
Six degrees.
I would say a phone call and then a letter.
Yeah, 'cause, you know, I think, I'd want him to hear from us.
Yep, I think that's correct.
As a courtesy, we certainly own that.
Yeah.
Anybody ask what?
Okay, uh, okay.
Um, Cal or Ken, can one of you get me, what I'd like to do is call everybody in the ZBA.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd rather they hear it from me than, than in any way else. But I also, Ken's idea of sending a letter, um, of thanks to Joe for his service on this next one.
Okay. I'll get your contact information.
Thank you.
And pull it on. I'll call them tomorrow.
Okay.
All of them.
Yep.
Excellent.
That way they hear it from me.
Thank you. That would be, um, several easy phone calls, so thank you.
Yeah. All right, where are we then? Let's see.
We've got ministry.
Many appointments were through...
Joanne, do you have anything else for the second fight?
Oh, we're just hanging.
No, all right, okay, all right.
We're gonna be hanging a lot more.
Thank you for keeping this company.
We've come to a whole meeting before. I was looking at the old business, I was curious about one of the lots, I didn't know if you guys were talking about it or not.
We wasn't.
Here, yeah.
Stand by.
Yeah.
Okay, we got that, we got that.
Do we wanna finish old business?
I think we have orders, right?
What's that?
We got orders here from the, we gotta do all our money things too, right?
Correct, we're still gonna do all that, so, all right. So how about, why don't we sign? That way it's done.
Sure, sure.
All right, so I have an accounts payable manifest in the amount of ninety-two thousand two hundred twenty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I have a payroll manifest in the amount of sixty-three thousand one hundred forty-one dollars and seventy-two cents.
So moved.
And seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Can the inter-fund transfer, uh, in the amount of, what do I need to read off this? Transfer to and from?
Yep.
So from TD Bank, um...
Operating?
Yep. Yep, um...
The operating fund to...
Yep, the operating fund to the TD Bank operating account, uh, in the amount of eleven thousand eighty-eight dollars even.
So motion?
Do we need a motion or do we just sign?
You just sign.
Okay.
And to the Conservation Commission funds, not TD Bank?
Thank you.
It, it's a weird form.
It is a weird form. With weird abbreviations.
Good, okay.
All right, put that there. All right, next is the notice of intent to cut wood, timber map, uh, two fifty-six lot five and map two two seven, lot two, next. And can these are all of us signed? Do we need a motion?
Yep, no, we don't have a motion.
Okay.
So do I have to sign them?
You have to sign in two places.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mandy responded to your feedback of not liking the please sign sticker, she has new ones that say...
Where's the second place though? I don't see.
Oh, maybe not, that one.
Bring the stickers back.
What's the, what were the stickers?
It was the red ones that like had fallen off.
Oh.
Right, yeah, she was reusing that thing today.
No, actually, it wasn't that they were getting reused, she would pull them right off the thing and they just wouldn't work.
Oh, really?
So she would just throw them out and...
Got some new ones. Better, better class of sticker?
Yes.
There's another one.
Was it the fifteenth?
Yep.
It's to the...
Oh, the second one is...
All right, is there a second one or?
Uh, I think we didn't find the second one, so we looked. Right, Kent. I lied to the other ones like that too, I'm sorry.
Call, it's the, um, concessions.
Right.
Yeah, okay, there's that. I didn't date my, my stuff, I happened to, I did not.
Yeah. So that, and I think is all signed. This is the one that needs two signatures. All right, so that was the Veterans Tax Credit Map, right?
Yes.
Tax applications, sorry.
Yes.
And this last one is the yield tax levy, uh, in the amount of seven hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty-two cents for map and lot two two five dash zero zero two. Anything else I need to review, maybe to know? All right, where's that?
It's that one, correct.
That's correct, not that one, yeah.
This two signed, this one signed, yes, that one's all.
Alright, Ken, I think that brings us to minutes, right? Yep, so hopefully everybody's looked at the April first public minutes?
Yes, the one thing I found was on line ninety-eight, Art Rose described how the CIC worked in Goffstown. I think that's supposed to be CIP?
Uh, no, uh, C, he said the, he was on the, um, capital improvement committee in Goffstown.
Yes.
And so he explained how that came about.
The CIC is the capital improvement committee.
Yeah, I'm really sorry.
And we've been talking about a CIP?
Yep.
And a CIC.
And both.
Okay.
'Cause the planning board is trying to work on the committee end of it. And Art explained that the committee is made up of representatives from the planning board and other departments.
If you want, I can...
No, so, so is it correct on line ninety-five, so that should be CIP versus CIC? Are they both correct?
They are both correct, 'cause you asked how the plan would be maintained, um, going forward.
Okay, capital improvement plan versus capital improvement committee.
Yeah, if you'd like, I can switch the acronyms to spelled out. Um, the only reason I did it this way was to try to save, save space.
No, that's okay, I was reading this in approximately thirty-five seconds, so if I had read it when I should've, I would've seen that, so, no, it's fine, leave it the way it is, thank you.
Move the minutes.
Uh, yes.
All of you take it?
I'd like to say this was ten pages originally, and I got it down to seven.
Okay.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Um, Cal, Kent moved, Beth seconded, I'm not sure if you caught that, and we all, we all voted, sorry.
Thank you.
No worries, it's all good. It's just late, we just kinda like you here. Believe me, I'm all in favor of that. Alright, so the executive session, I'm just gonna circulate.
Oh, I gave three copies this time, so each of you should've had one.
Yeah, so I've looked at them, anybody else?
Yep.
I'm gonna ask for all of them back, so I hope.
Oh, you're still? Of course you can.
I mean, I might have one, but it's somewhere that I can't find at the moment, so let me look at the-
Executive session.
Yeah. You didn't get us your copy?
Yeah.
Seems like it covers every time, I don't see any. There's three of three, there's one of three.
So moved.
And seconded.
Alright, Beth seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, but you need, that's copy two of two, that was mine, back, where did you go? I'll find it before we do this.
Okay, I'll pass these two back, so at least they're accounted for.
Alright, do you hear? Aye.
Alright, while Beth is looking, you have that new business?
Yep.
A letter from Donna Miller regarding center maintenance.
Yes, and you should have a copy of that letter in your-
My new business file?
I believe so.
Um...
Or did, did I, did I give you? Oh, no, I gave, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Beth has one.
I have one.
Beth has one, give one to you, and give one to Ken.
That's a long letter.
That is a letter just on the, there was a question that came up, or a discussion, a short discussion about the center, uh, maintenance committee slash volunteers. And that is, Donna had just dropped that off in my office last week to let you guys know what they have done. Um, and then there's on the, the last page is a note from, I think it's a communication from several years ago.
Oh, no, it's the, she said it's from the book.
Oh, I'm sorry, the book.
It's an excerpt from, as I've heard tell.
Right, Catherine Dixon.
About the history of village improvement society.
Yep.
And how it seems to kind of go and-
Really for your, uh, information, just to let you know what they're doing and, um, what they have done, I guess.
Well, this is another good instance of, you know, they watched the video, they saw the discussion.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, Donna just was unclear, um, how the discussion, I guess the context of the discussion, and there were parts of it she couldn't quite hear, so she just wanted to make sure that everybody was clear on, on the current, um, and recent history of the committee. So I think this is probably helpful information. Um, also that, um, it was really nice to know, um, that the, uh, the foresters from Division of Land, Forests and Lands, and everyone was involved in all the work that was done. It was, it's a nice summation of what they've done.
It is a good one. I had sort of hoped that they'd be in a nucleus to start up a group, but that hasn't happened, so I think it's time we regroup though then.
Um, I was thinking about that too a little bit as I walked around, I've been walking the neighbor's dog through the center every day, so it, it seems like if, I don't know if it would be easier to break it into bits and say, you know, who's, if the historical society is taking care of the old Elkins Museum, should they also take care of that little piece of the center? Should they be responsible? Uh, and then if they, you know, if they're already coming in to talk to the select board about things, can they come in and say, we need to blah blah blah? You know, I don't know who's responsible for the green, per se. Uh, cemetery is taking care of the cemetery, but that verge too, with those trees like where the Christian Ellen is? Is that a cemetery?
No, we don't come past the wall.
Don't come outside the wall.
How about a suggestion? It's eight o'clock.
Yes.
And we're once again trying to set a record for it.
Yes.
Let's move on.
Okay.
I'd like to read this and digest it, so.
Okay, and where do we move it on to? Old business next to?
It can come on to old business the next meeting.
Okay. Until that time, kudos to Donna for an excellent summation. And thanks to all for-
So that brings us to historical society suggestions, power to?
Hauser Museum.
Ah, there we go, okay, internet access to Elkins, twenty-twenty-seven tricentennial committee.
Yes, uh, so the historical society contacted me and had some, some questions and some suggestions. Right now, we're spending forty-one, approximately forty-one or forty, between forty-one and fifty dollars a month on the electric supply to the Hauser Museum.
Okay.
Which gets used
Once.
Once or twice a year. Um, so the thought was that if we are going to repay the lot at the library, the pavement at the library, maybe it would be worth while to investigate running an additional power line from the library down to the Hauser Museum to provide just enough power, 'cause it powers the lights, that's all that's down there. And then they have the, they have one, um, propane space heater that, that they use if, if they need it, which isn't, I don't think they ever use it. Um, so their thought was the town could save, you know, five hundred bucks a year, um, by, by doing that. And it wouldn't be a significant energy draw on the library, so to speak. I don't know what the panels look like in the library, if there's something where we can run another circuit across there. I did investigate this at all, I'm just, it was a suggestion from the historical society. I can certainly follow up, but thought that was a good idea or not?
I mean, we, it's like we're abandoning it if we don't give it power, and they're not using it when we give it power. So can we, I mean, I know this late, but somebody brought the question up to me the other day, and that is, the town is buying power through a power agreement with a separate company, right?
No, we're with, uh, Community Power.
Okay, so that went, 'cause when we first started.
Everything got transferred over.
Okay, so that question stuff, okay. Um, I mean, we could put a solar panel out there and give them a light bulb.
I think that's actually a great idea.
You know, cautiously.
I really do.
Oh, wait a minute, how did they like it when it was a one-room school, doesn't, isn't that why it has the big windows?
There are, there are ceiling lights in there, not a-
When they have programs?
I don't know that they use it at night, it's typically during the day for the one-room schoolhouse for the kids.
Or during the fair, they used to.
Yeah, yeah, they have, they open for the fair for sometimes for tours.
Right.
But it's typically during the day. Um, we do have an alarm in there.
Oh, no.
And it's-
Battery?
Well, no, it's got a battery backup, it is powered by one-ten, um, and really it's for, for fire. Uh, we have one motion sensor on there, but, but it's, it's to let us know in case there's, there's two smoke detectors in the building, in case there's a problem, so.
We wanna keep them powered up though.
Yeah, and I, I think, I mean, the suggestion from, from the historical society was maybe run a conduit across with, with one circuit that, that allows, you know, um, for-
The alarm and-
For the alarm.
That seems reasonable.
And maybe a light or something like that if needed.
Yeah.
And if it's, you know, as forty, fifty bucks, as you say, you only use it once, and low power for those other things, it seems if it works.
Okay.
Is it, is it, this is a silly question perhaps, is it easier to go from the library to the Hauser than from the town hall to the Hauser?
I, I don't know. I mean, from the town hall, it would be dirt, it wouldn't be across the fire parking lot.
Right.
You get a septic system.
Oh, septic and then the, and the big, yeah, alright, never mind. Alright, it seems reasonable to me.
Um, the internet access to the Elkins, they, Elkins Museum, historical society would like to use that more as a meeting space, um, at times, they do work sessions there, and they would like to have internet access. So I was gonna give Comcast a call and see if we could get internet access to that.
Do we pay for each of those, or do they give the town as a government?
We do, we pay for internet access, um, uh, I certainly wouldn't hurt for what it would cost there to ask them if they could provide it.
Oh, internet access to the old Elkins?
Yeah, to the Elkins Museum.
I was like, okay, got it, for the Elkins Museum.
And I, you know, certainly I could ask, you know, can you, can you give it to us, and this is what it is, and this is what it's for? And could you, good faith, make it a, make it a write-off for you guys?
Contribution?
Yeah, whatever. Um, and then the other one, the last one is the tricentennial committee, um, as you know, the, or if you don't, the tricentennial's coming up. Um, and the suggestion is to have form a committee, um, to see what, how the town will celebrate it and what the town will do. So, um, if you guys are primental to that, they would like to have a seat on that committee, uh, the historical society, and, um, I would guess they would like steer the direction somehow or-
And is the, with the tricentennial committee, be something different people than historic, or would it be a subcommittee?
They, they would like a seat on the committee if you do form a committee, the historical society would like a seat on that committee.
And why wouldn't they just be the committee?
They feel that, uh, should get other members of the public involved. So.
And how does, um, how does one form?
So the board of-
Do they put it out?
Board of selectmen can say, we're gonna form a committee.
Yeah.
And this is gonna be its purpose and its goal, or whatever you wanna call it, and then you solicit for members.
Um, the, the reason I only ask it in that way is, wouldn't the historic, as opposed to just having a seat on it, would they like to steer it more by having it be a subcommittee of them and not have to form a new thing?
Their, their question-
I want somebody to lead this parade, and it's not them.
Their question was, I need to form a committee, they think you should, and if you do, they'd like a seat on it.
Alright.
That was all I got.
Sounds, sounds easy enough, if they can, if, oh, can we get them to organize the committee?
That's gonna be up to us. It's on committee.
Hey, tricentennial, sounds good.
Okay, so, um, I will do a little investigation into, with other towns, what they've done as far as committees and-
And lead times.
And lead times and stuff.
When does this happen again?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
So we got time, but, but-
But not much.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea to start thinking about it. Anything further on?
No, I don't think so, okay.
I don't think so, no.
Yep, and then, uh, I do have a couple of other things for new business.
Okay.
Um, just as a notification, the town of Osswind has reached out, um, and asked if, uh, the town of Canterbury could help it out with code enforcement, they've lost their code enforcement officer. And similar to the agreement we have with them, the interminable agreement we have with them with our building inspector, they would like to do a similar, uh, position with the code enforcement.
Is he interested, or have you talked to him?
I haven't talked to Joel, I sent an email back to them saying that I would talk to you guys, um, and get your permission first, and then talk to Joel and see if-
Does he have time, or?
Yeah, that would be my first question too.
I will say, from, from what, the email from, from them, from Osswind was that similar to us, they don't use the code enforcement, 'cause they don't have a lot of situations, they're actively trying to hire somebody.
Yeah.
Um, and it would be a short-term solution to help them out, so, um, my guess is, and they know that Joel works part-time for us, and has other commitments, and, um, that may take a few days or so to get a, get him over there to, you know, check out, uh, issues.
Do we run into any, he would still be paid by us.
Correct.
And they would reimburse.
Correct.
Do we run into any federal issues if he exceeds twenty-nine and L?
Nope, nope, he's a part-time employee.
Okay.
And that's, yeah.
Say if he has time.
I think it shouldn't be a long-term thing, though.
Nope, and that's, they stress that, that this is a short-term solution, and, and certainly they're, they're actively trying to find somebody.
Yeah.
Seems neighborly to say yes, if he's got the time?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, I am meeting with Bacon Electric on Thursday morning, here to discuss our audiovisual capabilities and see if there's a better answer to what we had about.
Yeah.
Good.
And, um, I guess in new business, I get, I don't know if this is new business or old business. I sent you an email about the floor estimate for the town hall.
Yep.
And I just wanted to make sure that you guys are comfortable with that on the estimate and that we could-
How much was it? I didn't see that one again.
Four thousand dollars to do the additional bathroom, the kitchen, and the hallway.
The hallway.
Yeah.
Right up to the floor and the-
Right up to the wood floor.
Okay.
And, and getting rid of all the material.
And they would, that includes disposal of the existing, removal and disposal of the existing material, and an installation of the new, along with the base building.
They gonna re, put the toilet in, or we need to do that?
No.
Did you do that? You look good, Ken.
Thank you, Ken.
Wax breaks.
Uh, that's the, if that's a contractor that we've used and that's the-
That is concrete carpet that we use and have used at the town office, the real estate building, and they did the bathroom here, so.
I think it looks good.
I don't know if anybody's looked at the bathroom, the floor.
Yep.
Uh, it does look really good, I think, you know, and they would reuse the same material.
Sounds good to me.
I'm hoping it's gonna be more resistant to water, 'cause that's where the problem-
It's a vinyl, so I think it would, um, and the one- And the one in the Town Office, it's the same material in the Town Office, in the whistle building, and they've stood up quite well to a lot of traffic and water.
Yeah.
Money boots and so on, so.
Okay. I'm comfortable with it.
Me, too.
Yes, three.
I guess the question that goes along with that is, the money to pay for that, whether we use it or whether it comes from, right now, we only have, I can't remember, it's less than a thousand dollars in the maintenance line for the Town Hall.
Yeah.
We have an emergency building fund account, capital account, that you can transfer money over to pay for this, because it all would be fifty-one hundred dollars for all of it.
And what's left in the other fund?
Pardon me?
What's in the other fund?
Twenty-six thousand, twenty-seven thousand, something like that.
And certainly, I think the leak constitutes emergency.
I was, yes.
We used it to put the new steps in, didn't we, on share, or?
Uh, no, we ate that in the budget, but it wasn't, you know, we could, we had it in the budget. That was late enough in the year that we could see the whole budget, but this is kind of early, and it's like, well, let's, you know, there's other costs, the chief talked, the fire chief talked about the dry hydrant, initial costs like that, and so we have, this is, again, too, a little early in the year to say, okay, let's just do it. All right, I will arrange
If it's reasonable to, yeah, transfer that
Yeah, I'll arrange it, we'll arrange it to fund transfer for that.
So, what did you say it's going to come from?
Five thousand one hundred dollars from the emergency building.
Is it five thousand one hundred? Isn't there a thousand still in the, for the, for the maintenance budget, or?
Well, there is, there's money in the maintenance line, but we tune up the furnace every year.
Oh, got it.
And we don't
It's not just maintenance for the Town Halls?
It's maintenance for the Town Hall, but we do the furnace, and if something happens to the refrigerator or something like that, then we make enough.
So, leave that in there and transfer the money for the floor, okay?
Yeah, we have a thousand dollars in there.
Got it.
Ken, going back to power to Hauser, does it make sense when the electrician's here to?
Yep. I will, that's why I figured I'd talk to him about Bacon Electric and talk to him about that.
He gets two thumbs up.
Yep.
Yeah. The only thing about taking it out of the Town Hall might be easier as far as getting it out of the building.
And that's, yeah.
Because I don't know where the power is over here, but
It's in the back room behind Rachel's office there.
Yeah.
So, I don't know how they would, if they could go up through the drop ceiling above, come out, come out that side of the building and go, just cut the water, I don't know.
Or maybe the breaker box in the, you know. That's easy to get.
Yeah.
Whichever one is
And I'll, we'll look at everything and see what we can do.
Okay.
All right.
Comcast?
Old business?
Yep, I think that's where we are.
Okay, Comcast update?
Yep.
And Beth had asked about this. Again, we made the announcement at the town meeting that they were gonna do the work. One of the things that, that was, wasn't discussed was that Comcast provides a drop to everybody's house for no cost, up to two hundred feet, two hundred fifty feet.
Two hundred fifty, I think.
Two hundred fifty feet. Passed there, they charge.
Yeah.
However, with the BMGI money, if they, they've gotten the grant, to best my knowledge, it hasn't been appealed, the thirty-day appeal process is supposed to be getting close.
Yeah.
And they were willing to look at individual situations to see if they might be able to help people out.
Cool.
So, if that was carried.
Are they still on track to fulfill their six-month?
That is the last message I got from them, and they haven't contacted me to say anything different, so.
Did you ask them to draw a format to dump to if they don't buy, or?
I will do that at the same time I talk to about the Elkins Museum.
Okay.
Oh, good, yeah.
We're down to the offer for the town-owned property, Mac 102 Y 52.
Yeah.
That is the lot Mrs. Steenbergen had purchased the land next door.
Yeah.
Now, she's interested in the lot across the street. I think we talked about it at the last meeting, and Ken had described it as pretty steep, ledgy and everything. And I, I know you guys had thought maybe you might take a site visit, if possible, if not, what your thoughts were on, on the cost for that lot, if you were gonna offer it up for sale.
So, the only thing about it, I mean, if you try and drive up there with a two-wheel drive, you can make it, but it just barely. And it's wedge-sticking out, that you're jumping on and over. I think, I don't care if she buys it particularly, but I'm not sure we want anybody building up there. That'd be my only thought on this whole thing.
And again, you have the ability to, to put a condition on the deed that there will be no, it is not a dwelling lot.
A great dwelling, yeah. I don't think, I think it only outlets on that roof, it doesn't outlet anywhere else.
There's no
Right.
It does not.
Did you?
Yeah, yeah. And I'm gonna do, but I guess the price is to be
What's it appraised at?
If you're gonna put a condition on it, that it's not buildable, that would affect things, yes?
Well, that's what we've been doing. Yes, we sort of want some there.
Yeah.
So, yes, it's the shortage, it certainly does.
Refresh me, how was the size again?
Quarter acre.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Maybe bigger, I don't know.
Right now, the town hall is at twelve thousand two hundred dollars.
We gave her the other lot for twenty-five hundred.
Yeah.
And that was happy?
Quarter acre.
Is that quarter acre as well? This is a quarter acre as well.
Yeah.
And, and if we want to say it's not
Buildable.
Not buildable?
Or you could say that there will be no residential construction on it.
Yeah.
Would be the way to do it.
Same?
Works for me.
Twenty-five.
Same price, yeah?
I mean, I think that's fair.
Yeah, it's nothing she can do with it.
It feels fair, if she wants it and it's not, and there's, you know, yeah, it's something we don't have to
Yeah. Hey? What? Oh, yes. Thank you, Cal, yeah.
Thank you, Cal.
Sixty days?
Yeah, to respond, or to pay.
I say sixty days to close the deal.
Yeah.
And you will not entertain any other offers until
That is correct.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, that's what we, yeah.
We had a meeting last week about, I talked to you about the dirt roads with fire roads and all the jobs here. So, I'll go with that.
Very good.
You're gonna do land use administrator application period closed?
Yep, I have one more in my folder here, just get through everything, make sure that there's anything else. The last one is the HVAC unit for the Historical Society.
Oh, yeah.
You had given the energy trade two weeks.
That is correct.
Sam met with another company, with a third company, has another bid, it's fifty-seven hundred dollars, which is the cheapest. This company is highly recommended, and I talked to Sam about it, and I, he and I both agree that this would be the place to, place to go.
Okay.
Can you say which company that is?
Yep, it's Home Energy Products out of Delmar.
Home, H O M E?
H O M E, Energy Products out of Delmar. And there was a question about a maintenance plan for all of our units, and we talked to this gentleman here, and he didn't feel with the use of our buildings, that we needed a maintenance plan. Generally, the maintenance is removing the front part of the unit, pulling the filter out, making sure once a year that it's clean.
Yeah.
The outside unit, there is no maintenance on it unless you, it stops functioning, and then there's, you'd have to call and have a technician come out.
I know, I had one outside my house for like twelve years, and you'd never look at it. They keep trying to get people to look at it, they're like, we don't have to look at it, so I'm like
Right, there's nothing, there's nothing to look at.
I know.
I mean, as long, as long as you don't have bushes growing up around it and heating the air, so that's, that's all you need to
It's crazy, though. Okay, great.
All right, and now it comes down to the land use administrator.
Yep.
We have one resume, the application period ended today. I think you all have copies of the resume. I think I emailed it to you at one point, did I?
Well, what, back and back, yes?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
I think I sent you the resume of this, this one.
Yep.
What I'd like to do is move forward with the interview process, which is myself, the secretaries of the ZDA and
Yeah.
And Mandy, and then go to the next after that.
Just out of curiosity, do you see the job description changing with all of the current needs for the planning board?
Uh, no.
And perhaps, maybe not in scope, but in hours?
I don't know. We have budgeted a certain amount of money, and I think we have to pretty stay within that amount of money. And I think
I guess we won't know until we know, until the person starts to
Exactly, exactly. This is a new position, so it's gonna be, I mean, realistically, we're in April. If we are able to hire this person after all the interviews, we're looking at probably May, maybe the middle of May before they actually come on board. So, we're five months into the year, and then go from there and see what the hours look like. And again, I think I emailed you guys as far as, we don't want to overwhelm this person right from the get-go. They, just from the resume, it looks like they have experience and training in this position.
Yep.
So, hopefully, it's not a huge learning curve.
Yeah.
But we want to give them time to settle in and figure out. And again, the job description may change based on their report, too.
Yeah.
They may come to us and say, we think we need to change this in the job description and get permission from you guys and change the job description, if you'll say so.
And you'll know more about that after you've interviewed her in the two seconds.
Yep.
And I thought we talked about starting that person potentially with the planning board first.
Correct.
To, since Lois has indicated she needs to step back.
Yep, yep.
When does that interview happen, Ken?
I don't know, I have to notify all the interested parties and try and come up with some dates. And I think the last thing we have on old business is the action item list.
Which is a great list.
I've never seen one of these before.
It's, it's
My name is on there, too.
What do you say, if you stay along long enough?
I see a lot of Ken's over, too.
Yep. Yeah, and I think we made headway on some of them, too, so.
What are you gonna do, check them off as we edit some meetings, or?
Go ahead.
It's an Excel sheet, and I think I've been sending you the Excel sheet along with the agenda and minutes. So, you'll see, no, I've been sending it Tuesday after, so tomorrow, you guys are all getting a new one with the new tasks, because you all talked about
Well, and the new ones that have been completed, correct?
Um, and you'll see that the reference numbers, there are missing ones in that Excel sheet. All of the completed ones are still in there, they're just hidden.
You have the little menu thing under completed, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I, when they're completed, I'll write either yes, it was completed, or the date, if I know the date. And then it'll get hidden, and it'll just be the open ones that you'll see.
So, you won't see the unsatisfactory showing?
I mean, it's in Excel, so we can do whatever.
Whatever you want to do.
This is huge.
We can do highlights.
I can make charts, I can make full-size charts.
Right, we can do high charts out of these.
But Ken, you were saying that before, when you tried this experiment, you pretty much went over the whole list on the first select board meeting of the
Yes, so, so what, the way things usually play out is, the first meeting of the month has less on the agenda, usually. So, we would review this on the first meeting and attend to any that have not been accomplished. And either why they haven't been, what has to happen, things like that.
Or not date, or whatever.
Yeah, updates or whatever. Any that, any that have been accomplished, you will have the information in front of you where, yes, it got down on this date, and this was the outcome. And if you have questions on the outcome, then that's the time to ask. So, that would be, that would be the, the hope that we could work that way.
Do we all think it's, well, we'll have to see. I was gonna say, do we all think it's time-wise, we're gonna have time to actually do that in the first meeting of the month? But I guess we won't know that until the next first meeting, to see if we have time.
Yeah.
If not, does then it warrant, I mean, this is a lot, I mean, this could easily be an hour discussion about going through this whole thing and picking through it. Does it, does anybody think there should be like a regularly scheduled one-hour work session to go through the action item list? Or try it just?
I think that any of them that have been accomplished, unless there are some kind of questions, I mean, if you have technical questions, particularly on any of that have been checked off, feel free to email me, and then I can hopefully answer most questions. But, you know, like, number one, where the follow-up on with Rachel about the library parking spaces, the signs have been ordered. And when it's completed, it'll be the signs are installed. And really
No discussion necessary.
There really, yeah, there really isn't any discussion, unless we complain, unless we get concerns or whatever about it. But that's, you know, same thing, ask John to borrow the highway, try for a date. That's, you know, we'll, we'll make sure it's done and
Check it off, no discussion?
Check it off and move on.
Okay. This is, this is a really kind of sobering look at everything that needs to get done on a regular schedule.
A lot of stuff.
It's, it's great. So, thank you for keeping it updated, Cal, because that's another thing on your plate, so, thank you.
Anything further from anyone?
I, I, I think that's it. It's the whole agenda.
When are we meeting?
Tomorrow late.
What time?
Five.
Five, yeah. At the same length.
If between now and then, oh, that'll be we had anything that might pop to mind that you wanted to add, can we do that at that time, or do we have to do it before?
As, as the agenda says, you can change it at any time.
Okay. Thank you.
All those.
Beth, I still need a copy, two of thirty.
So, do we, do you want to contact Brendan, or you want me to?
Can you?
Yeah.
Because I'll, I'm gonna spend some time at the phone calls.
We're all set.
Yeah. Correct. As far as I'm concerned, yes, unless he's, for some reason, not interested.
I don't know. But I When I asked him, I'd ask him to find out, and he's gotten back, and so
It sounds good to me.
Yeah.
But I'll reach out to everybody else, or somebody else.
I'll reach out to contact information.
Beth, I'm just gonna look through here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it. I don't have one.
Attached to something.
Did you get it?
Yeah.
Ready to run?
Thank you to the peanut gallery for the sub hearing.
Yes. Hey, Ken? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Uh, yes.
All is in favor?
Aye.
It's official, we're adjourned.